All right, everybody. It looks like we are ready to go here. We certainly have a number of, not everybody is in attendance, and I'll call the meeting of May 5th, 2025, for Missoula City Council to order at 6:04 PM. Before we start with our agenda items, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. We do have minutes from April 21st. Do any council members have any questions or suggested changes for the minutes? All right, not seeing any, not seeing any online here. Then those minutes will remain as submitted. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our committee schedule for this Wednesday, May 7th, 2025. Looks like we've got committees starting at 9:00 in the morning, and they do last for the majority of the afternoon up until the end of the day. And so Ms. Trimble, do we have any changes to our committee schedule for this Wednesday?
No changes, no abnormalities, just a regular day.
All right, excellent. Thank you. That committee's schedule is located on the city of Missoula's website, and it's under City Council. And you can just look up agendas and minutes, and you can find a calendar there with all of the committee schedules and the associated agenda items. All right, next, we'll move on to special presentations and proclamations. Tonight, we do not have any neighborhood council updates. We do have two proclamations, and then we have a special presentation from a Missoula-area student tonight. So I will, oh, wait. Ms. Trimble, my apologies. We need to do a roll call. I'm sorry. Let's go back to item number one.
Don't worry. I thought you'd said everyone was here, but I'm just gonna double-check. All right, beginning with Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Sarah.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Carlino.
Present.
Farmer.
Here.
Jones.
I do believe Ms. Jones is absent. Yes, okay.
Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage.
Present.
Cheryl.
Present.
And Vazika.
Present.
All right, just Jones absent tonight. We do have a forum.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that, folks. I was so excited for our proclamations and special presentation. I skipped over that item. I will mention for council that we have a slight adjustment to our printed city council agenda. We're adding 4.4 to our agenda this evening, and it is a special presentation on a school project regarding energy efficiency that the city could consider by Elia Gershens. I think I probably didn't say that right, but we'll hear it again. And so that's item 4.4, and I just wanted to mention that for you all and members of the public. All right, before we get started with that, we'll move on to our first proclamation. Our first proclamation this evening is in regards to Public Employee Service Recognition Week. So, whereas Missoulians are served every day by public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels, and these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas, public employees embody the spirit of service and through their work, provide protection and care, keep our community orderly, and continuously strive to improve the quality of life for others. And whereas, public employees, day in and day out, provide the diverse services demanded by the people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, this week serves to highlight the accomplishments of the dedicated employees who work tirelessly on behalf of all citizenry and who rarely get the credit they deserve. And whereas, the city of Missoula values the commitment of public employees working for the betterment of the community. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize May 4th through 10th, 2025, as Public Employee Service Recognition Week. Thank you very much to all of the folks that are working every day for the city of Missoula, the county of Missoula, our partners here in local government. We are very grateful for the efforts that you make to make our community a better place for us all. Thank you. So that is our first proclamation. Our second proclamation is in recognition of Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and People Awareness Day. Here we go. Whereas, the plight of missing and murdered indigenous women and people is a crisis of our nation, and there is no comprehensive estimate of the number of indigenous women who are missing and murdered. And whereas, 84% of indigenous women have experienced some form of violence in their lifetimes, they experience murder at a rate 10 times higher than the national average. Murder is the third-leading cause of death for indigenous women and girls. They are 2 and 1/2 times more likely to experience sexual assault than non-indigenous women, and 1 in 3 indigenous women reports having been raped in her lifetime. And whereas, indigenous people are 4 times more likely to go missing in Montana than non-indigenous people, and Montana is among the top 5 states for cases involving missing and murdered indigenous women and people. And whereas, the red handprint across the mouth has become a national symbol of the MMIW movement honoring those silenced by violence and the magnitude of violence against indigenous women today is a direct result of ongoing systemic injustices. And whereas, following the 2013 murder of Hannah Harris on the Northern Cheyenne Reservation, May 5th was nationally recognized to honor, missing, and murdered indigenous relatives and to call for a commitment to lasting change by supporting leadership of native communities in advocacy and reform and working toward a future where indigenous women are safe and justice is served. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Davis, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the state of Montana, hereby recognize the 5th day of May, 2025, as Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and People Awareness Day. And we are joined by a member of our community this evening. Joni, if you'd like to come on up to the microphone and say a few words, we'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Joni Kicking Woman. I also work for the Community Justice Division and the Crime Victim Advocate Program. MMIWP, this is not an epidemic, it's a system. The MMIP crisis, 4 in 5 native women will experience violence. In some communities, we are 10 times more likely to be murdered. We are not statistics. We are mothers, your aunties, your sisters, your daughters. Rape is not a crime of passion. It is a tool of conquest. It was written into the story of this nation, and it continues. The origins of MIP is not new. It began with colonization and is reinforced through law and federal policy. From Columbus to boarding schools to present-day courtrooms, violence against native people has been sanctioned by systems of power. That legacy continues to determine who received justice and who was denied it. Jurisdiction was stripped from our nations. For decades, tribes could not prosecute non-natives. Even now, most cannot prosecute sexual assault. This was not an oversight. It was a decision. The narrative is the law erased us and the media replaced us. This is a fight for sovereignty, not sympathy. We are not asking for protection. We are demanding prosecution, authority, and respect. We are demanding justice. This is the work. We must work to protect each other, to support survivors, to strengthen tribal sovereignty, to demand better from lawmakers, from media, and ourselves. We need to be better, to do better. This means advocating for all people of color and the houseless, to address and solve this housing crisis and make systems fair and equitable for all. We need to do the work and advocate, and advocate, support, receive training, gain cultural competency, and enforce diversity and equity trainings at all levels so families may receive justice and they may be able to heal. Thank you for your time and recognizing this momentous day. Thank you to Mayor Davis for standing in solidarity and being an ally. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kicking Woman. Any questions for Ms. Kicking Woman? Would you mind, Joni, would you mind staying at the microphone for a question or a comment? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, thank you, sir. I just had a comment. I wanted to really thank you for speaking to the deliberate confusion of jurisdiction, which is why we see such an increase in the murder and rape of Native American women, because Indian law is deliberately confusing based on jurisdiction. You have to know the race of the victim, the race of the offender. You have to know what the crime was and where it happened before anyone can come in and start to investigate the case. And that was deliberately set up by colonial governments to make sure that Native Americans don't have the sovereignty that they deserve. I did some Indian law classes at U M., and it was absolutely floored by the laws I learned about and how the biggest problem is that you have to know exactly what happened before you can even call in who's in charge of the crime. And I think that's one of the main reasons why we see such a high violence rate against Native American women is because we've set it up to be a free-for-all on our Native women, and I think it's horrible, and I really am glad you spoke to that tonight, and I'm really sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for those words.
Any other council questions or comments for Ms. Kicking Woman? All right, thank you, Counselor Jordan, and again, thank you very much, Ms. Kicking Woman. We very much are in allyship with you and appreciate you being here and the work that you're doing as part of our local government to help improve the greater system and our partnership with all of our multi-jurisdictions. I'm looking forward to working together more.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, that brings us to our next item. And so we do have, again, a special presentation this evening. It is a school project, and this is from Elia Gershens. I pronounced it really well earlier, Gershens. And so, Elia, if you want to come on up, what we can do is we can either have you stand on a chair. We can take the podium off of the table. Counselor Nugent will help you out here. That microphone will bend down easily, so you don't have to crane your neck. And then, when you're ready, you can go ahead and, please, say your name for the record, and then we'll listen to your presentation.
Hi, my name is Enai Gershens. Gershens.
Good job.
I am a 5th-grade student at Missoula International School. I am working on a project comparing the different types of energy, including renewable and non-renewable types. I presented some information about my findings to my classmates about how I believe that if we do not start using renewable energy more, the future of environment is in danger. I am gathering signatures from my classmates to show that they also believe in using renewable energy and how important they are. There are 4 reasons that I believe renewable energy is a better option than other types of energy such as fossil fuels. The first one is the environmental impact. Using fossil fuels reduces greenhouse gases into the atmosphere such as CO2, methane, and SO2. Renewable energy does not reduce greenhouse gases. Number 2 is the efficiency. Renewable energy is much more efficient than fossil fuels. It simply produces energy once you install it, whereas with fossil fuels, you have to always continuously be drilling to extract them. The third one is the price. In the long run, renewable energy sources such as solar power, geothermal power, and wind cost less than fossil fuels. The fourth one is the renewables, renewability. If we keep using fossil fuels at our current rate, we will probably run out in about 300 years. Renewable energy will take a very long time before we run out, if we even do. I would appreciate it if the city of Missoula would consider using more renewable energy options in the future. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
You're very welcome, Elia, and thank you very much for coming and presenting to us. I hope you'll stay in contact with the city and learn about some of our, and you probably have already, our 20 by 30 greenhouse gas reduction plan. And then something that's pretty exciting is the city of Missoula, the county of Missoula, and the city of Bozeman have been working with Northwest Energy to build what's called a green power plant. And so we have a green power plan. We're working on the program structure right now, and we would, together, develop, we would get developed a 50-megawatt power plant that is powered by either solar or wind. And so we're gonna continue to work with Northwest Energy to see this get built as soon as possible. And that means that businesses and residents here in Missoula will be able to purchase that green power. So we're excited to be able to see that happen. So let's stay connected on that. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. That wraps up our special presentations this evening. Thank you, Counselor Nugent. Appreciate your help there. Okay, folks, we are gonna get started on the rest of our agenda this evening. We do have 3 public hearings this evening. We've got a relatively straightforward consent agenda, not much on there, just a couple of items. And then we do have 1 regular business item under 91D, the Housing, Redevelopment, and Community Programs Committee. And this is the referral by Counselors Carlino and Jordan to fund the Johnson Street Shelter. And I wanted to take a moment, I think it's good every now and again, to reflect on what our decorum and our council rules are. Our decorum stated in our council rules and the agreement that we have here in this body in order to have a respectful conversation, even on items that we disagree with. So I'm gonna take this time to go ahead and just read Rule 4 for us. So we're reminded what this means. City council members, the mayor, city staff, and the public are all required to follow the same basic rules of order and decorum to maintain a productive atmosphere and the integrity of governmental business before council. City council meetings involve the city's business that must be addressed and dealt with. Conduct that is disruptive and remarks that are too long, unduly repetitious, or irrelevant impede the ability of the city council to conduct the pressing business before it. See White versus Norwalk, and there is a case cited there. Specifically, all meeting attendees shall strive to be professional in tone and conduct. Comments about elected officials, staff, or members of the public should be truthful, based in fact, and be germane to the agenda item under consideration as concise as possible and identify a specific concern about the issue being discussed. All comments shall be addressed to the presiding officer, that's me tonight, and not individual members of the governing body, staff, or other members of the public. Because the following conduct may cause disruptions or impede the ability of the city to conduct its business, attendees are asked to refrain from: name-calling or personal attacks, treating others with disrespect, making comments or noises while another person is recognized to speak, ridiculing with contemptuous and dismissive language or behavior directed toward a person rather than the agenda item under consideration, impugning motives of members of the public or staff by implying that they are not entirely honest or honorable, absent-supporting facts, using loud, threatening, abusive, indecent, or profane language, or participating in other conduct which actually disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. A person who resorts to persistent irrelevance or persistent repetition after the attention of the body has been called to the matter may be directed to discontinue the speech by the presiding officer. Any actions that disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting shall subject those engaging in such actions to removal from the meeting after they receive the presiding officer's warning to cease these actions immediately. A meeting may be recessed or adjourned by the presiding officer or chair of the meeting until order can be restored. Thanks, folks. I appreciate you listening to me as I read those aloud. I think it's important for us to remember that this rule has been adopted by city council, and it is applicable to city council, the mayor, city staff, and members of the public. And so I appreciate the fact that we will maintain a respectful decorum while in this room in order to conduct city council business. Thank you. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the next section of our agenda, which is the public hearing section of our agenda. Public hearings. State law and city councils' rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council and the mayor invite community comment. City council holds a public hearing on the item. A member of council makes a motion, and a vote is taken. The public hearing and vote take place on the same night unless there is a reason to hold the vote to a later meeting date. So we'll start with our first item, item 5.1. It's the funding recommendations for the Unified Application Program Year 2025. And we have Kendra Lissam, and we have Colleen Cain here to present for us this evening.
I'm sorry, Mayor Davis, Kendra can't be here tonight, but I will be filling in for her, if that's okay?
Absolutely. We're happy to have you here, Tracy. Thanks. And if you'll just go ahead and introduce yourself for the record, please.
I will, and I'm also gonna share my screen here. So my name is Tracy Pondorf, and we'll get into full-screen mode. Tracy Pondorf, I'm the Grants Program Manager in Community Planning, Development, and Innovation. And like Mayor Davis mentioned, Colleen Cain is also here, and she is a grants administrator for the Community and Development Division. And every spring, we come to council to present our funding. Oops, there's our introduction slides, if you want our contact info, sorry. So every spring, we come to council to present our funding recommendations for the upcoming year. And you're gonna hear about fiscal year 2026, and we might also refer to program year 2025, but we're talking about the same timeframe, and that is July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026. And here are buckets of funding. So bear with me. This is a lot. Every year, we have both local and federal funding, which can be awarded to various community support and housing projects. We have next year's award totals here, and they're divided into our 4 buckets of funding. From top to bottom on this slide, you'll see the funding is listed in order from most flexible to least flexible in terms of compliance requirements. So starting at the top, AHTF stands for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And this is local funding, and it's guided by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Allocation Plan, which is set annually by the Affordable Housing Resident Oversight Committee. Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars can be used for a variety of housing-related activities to benefit those with incomes up to 120% of area median income. And then next up, we have Community Development Block Grant, and we call that CDBG. CDBG funds are an annual direct allocation to the city of Missoula from the federal government through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. CDBG allocations differ from year to year, but we typically receive about $550,000. CDBG supports community development activities and may address needs such as housing, infrastructure, and public facilities, as well as social services. And then next is the Home Investment Partnership Program, called HOME for Short. These are also federal dollars from HUD. And same as CDBG, they're an annual direct allocation to the city. These funds can be used for a variety of housing-related projects and can be used for households with incomes up to 80% of the area median income. And then last, we have our HOME ARP Funds or HOME American Rescue Plan Funds. And this was a one-time allocation provided by HUD to the city to reduce homelessness and increase housing stability. The amounts seen here are the total awards for the projects selected this year. It's important to note that HUD hasn't set CDBG and HOME allocations for program year 2025 yet. And so far, this is not that unusual. When we receive our allocations, we'll adjust the awards, the award amounts if necessary, but no contracts are signed until we have the federal grant agreements in hand, and this is our standard practice every year. And then we have 2 methods for matching our funding with projects. We do hold an annual application round with a scoring committee, and we also match some funding to projects based on identified community needs. This year's scoring committee included 4 staff members and 2 city council members. We reviewed 8 applications and scored each based on a rubric that included things like project design, outcomes, and financial feasibility. Then, from previous application rounds, we've learned that some of our funding, like HOME and HOME ARP, doesn't mix well with our competitive round because the compliance requirements are unique and complicated. So we used identified community needs to match this funding with projects. And these needs were identified both in our funding allocation plans that are required by HUD and through various reports like our community needs assessment, needs and gap surveys, housing partnership meetings, housing landscape assessment, and point-in-time counts. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Colleen to talk about the individual projects.
Thanks, Tracy. This first project was the top-scoring project in our recent funding application round. United Way has proposed support for the Housing Solutions Fund. $118,605 in AHTF funds is recommended to provide a flexible source of financial assistance in order to prevent instances of houselessness. This project will benefit 250 low-income people. Human Resource Council has proposed support for their houseless prevention project, which works in tandem with the Housing Solutions Fund to support those at risk of houselessness who are able to meet the stricter criteria for the use of those federal funds. Using HOME ARP funds opens up additional operating and capacity-building funds to help support the project. $100,000 in HOME ARP funding is recommended to provide critical rent and deposit assistance to stabilize at-risk households and prevent houselessness. $11,944 can then be allocated for operating and capacity-building support. Leadership Health Center proposes support for their watershed navigation center, which is located adjacent to Blue Heron Place, right next to Trinity Apartments. HOME ARP funds are recommended for this project. Again, using HOME ARP funds opens up additional operating and capacity-building funds to help support the project. $299,937 would provide direct treatment and services for individuals who are houseless and at risk of houselessness, benefiting 250 low-income people. $35,824 are then available for operating and capacity-building support. HOME ARP has proposed support for the Lennox Flats Rehabilitation Project. $200,000 in HOME funds are recommended to support the rehabilitation of a 10-unit affordable housing project. Additionally, $17,534 in CHODO operating assistance is also recommended. These HOME dollars are available to support the administration of a local community housing development organization. The Paparello Center has proposed support for Housing Montana's Heroes. This project's site is located at the former Clark Fork Inn Space on Broadway, which is now ready for construction. $247,520 of CDBG funding is recommended to help construct a 20-unit transitional housing facility for unhoused veterans. And Parkson Recreation has proposed support for after-school programs in response to community needs assessments and surveys that continue to show childcare is a top need in our community. $74,755 in CDBG funding is recommended to provide afternoon childcare that complements MCPS's Jump Start program. Jump Start is a free 6-week summer initiative offered by our school district to help 5- to 9-year-olds with early literacy skills.
Thanks, Colleen. All right, this slide shows the anticipated outcomes of our projects. Overall this year, we're showing a mix of projects that support keeping Missoulians in their homes and rehabilitate and preserve existing affordable homes in the community. We're entering the construction phase of supportive transitional housing for veterans, and we're providing important after-school programming and childcare. These are deep needs in our community, and these projected outcomes help demonstrate the much-needed nature of our funds, both local and federal. And here we have the projects broken out by the award amounts, as well as the anticipated non-federal leverage funding in the projects. So we're showing 6 recipients with 9 separate awards. Again, that's because the HOME and HOME ARP awards unlock operating assistance and capacity-building support. And all of these awards are listed in the attached resolution, and they total just over $1.1 million. And the leverage column shows a total just over $877,000 of non-federal match to our grant dollars. I'd like to encourage everyone to take a look at our CDBG and HOME Annual Action Plan, where you can read about the proposed projects that will be supported with federal funding coming from HUD. Please let us know what you think and reach out with comments. You can do so by going to engagemissoula.com or by scanning the QR code. You can do so by going to EngageMissoula.com or by scanning the QR code on the screen. And we'll be accepting public comments through May 15th. And you can also comment by reaching out to us at the phone numbers or email addresses seen here. We're always happy to listen. And then this final slide just shows the resolution language. So thank you. We appreciate your time and the opportunity to present these plans to you. And I will stop sharing now.
Thank you, Ms. Pondorf. Thank you, Ms. Kane. Appreciate your presentation. And so there is a recommended motion on the table. Did, will you remind me again of what the public comment period is open through?
The public comment period is open through May 15th.
Great. And that's on the action plan. But you are, are you looking for, you're looking for a vote tonight? Or is?
Yes. The vote would be to adopt the resolution granting approval of our action plan and the funding to certain organizations and directing staff to negotiate contracts and agreements.
Great.
But I can read the whole, yeah. I can put the slide back up if that's needed.
No, I don't think you need to. Thank you. I appreciate that. Just want to make sure that we knew what we're voting or what you were voting on tonight. And so normally, this would be under our Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee, and that is Counselor Jones. She is not with us tonight, so I'll look to President Sheryl to go ahead and make this recommendation, or excuse me, this recommended motion, please. Wait, actually, let me stop you there. Sorry, because we are in a public hearing. I need to make sure that we go through the right, the right chain of events. So we'll go ahead and open it up. That was the staff presentation. And we'll go ahead and see if there are any questions from council. Thank you. Sorry about that. Any questions from council of the staff before we hear the motion and then hear public comment? Okay. Sorry about that. Now we can hear the main motion. Thank you.
Okay, great. We saw this on Wednesday, so we're all familiar with it and got to ask questions then. I recommend a resolution granting approval of the city of Missoula United Application Round Year 2025, awarding Affordable Housing Trust Fund, AHTF, Home Investment Partnership Program HOME, and Community Development Block Grant CDBG funds to certain organizations, directing staff to negotiate contracts and agreements, and authorizing the mayor to sign the contracts and agreements with said organizations.
Thank you very much. Counselor Sheryl. Okay, so the main motion is on the floor. This opens our public hearing, and we would offer the opportunity for any public comment at this time. Please say your name for the record. I do see that we have at least one of the applicants in the audience this evening, and that is Mr. Legbold with United Way. Hello there.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Davis and council. I'm just here to provide support and say thank you in advance, hopefully, that this is passed and to answer any questions. My name is Eric Legbold, L-E-G, V as in Victor, O-L-D, D as in David.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any questions for Eric this evening? Any questions for Mr. Legbold?
I guess I'll give a rough overview real quick of what we did in 2024. As we know, Housing Solutions Fund is a flexible financial assistance program designed to help individuals and families retain or secure stable housing. This is managed and operated through United Way of Missoula County and Human Resource Council's Housing Stability Program. Clients are referred through Missoula's Coordinated Entry System and their client-based organizations, roughly 40 throughout the county. It serves as a multi-generational safety net for Missoulians, supporting families, individuals, and seniors alike. Whether it's helping a single parent avoid eviction, covering a security deposit for a young adult leaving foster care, or restoring utilities for an elderly resident. The Housing Solutions Fund provides timely, flexible support that protects housing stability across every stage of life. It's not just a short-term fix. It's an investment in long-term community resilience and well-being. Program impact as of November 1st, 2024. Starting in November 1, 2021, we have provided resources to 715 households. That is roughly 2,000 individuals since, roughly $528,000 in assistance since. From July 1 through November 1, 2024, we provided assistance to roughly 240 households, according to 479 individuals. That was $236,451 appropriated or given to beneficiaries. Household income breakdown, a majority, roughly 70%, went to extremely low income. Following low income, moderate income. So we know that this is a very critical safety net for our community members across the county. Any questions?
Any questions for Eric? Yes. Counselor Sheryl?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for your work.
Sure. My pleasure.
Anybody else? All right.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Great. Absolutely. Thank you for your work. We appreciate the partnership. Thanks for being here tonight, Mr. Legbold. Good to see you. All right. Any other public comment on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any in the room. I'll check online here and make sure there's anybody, there's anybody online that wishes to make public comment on this agenda item? All right. I'm not seeing any additional public comments, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to council members. Do you have any additional questions or comments this evening? Yes, Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. I once again had the opportunity to serve on the scoring committee for the allocation of these funds. And I wish we were able to fund more projects, as every year we have significantly more requests and we have funds to allocate all really important projects that help the community move forward in terms of preventing or alleviating the impact of houselessness. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, because it is a significant, it's a pretty robust process that they have to go through and understand what projects can fit under what kind of funding source. So they do magic in order to fund as many projects as possible. And I just truly appreciate the staff that we have working for the city and the county on issues like this. So thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I appreciate your time spent on there, and thanks again for the recognition of the hard work that the staff put into this. You know, a fun fact, the, it's changed over time, and the reason for a uniform application is the staff have the ability to see what applications come in the door, and then they best fit those applications to the funding sources that are there. And as a result, we've been able to get more projects funded easily because it, we make sure that the right, the applications fit with the right funding source. So that's a, it's a good process. Thank you very much. Any other council comments? All right. All right. Not seeing any, then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble.
All right. Voting on the resolution granting approval of the Unified Application Round Year 2025, 2025, and awarding the various grants to certain funds and authorizing the negotiation of contracts and agreements, beginning with Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Elson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sheryl?
Yes.
And Vaseka?
Yes.
Great. And we have 11 in favor and none opposed.
Excellent. Thank you, Tracy. Colleen, thank you very much for your presentation and your work on this. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Our pleasure. All right. We'll move on to the next public hearing. That is item 5.2, the Tipp-Clark Fork River Property Open Space Project. We have Parks and Rec Open Space Manager Presentation by Zach Covington. Nice to have you here.
Thanks for having me.
You bet.
All right. Just taking one second to get, share my screen here, everything up. Okay. All right. Good to see everybody. It's been a few weeks since we talked about this project in committee, and so excited to bring this forward to you all for the public hearing and definitely here to answer any questions you have. So this is a property owned by Brian Tipp along the Clark Fork River, next to the Kim Williams Trail. In the map, you can see that the kind of highlighted green and black line is where the property exists. The red line on, in the middle there, kind of parallel to that, is city on property along the Kim Williams Trail. Got Ben Hughes Park labeled there across the river. And of course, East Missoula is to the north across the highway. 16.5 acre property. This would be a fee simple acquisition. And it's adjacent to city limits, but not within the city technically. And that's pretty common for a lot of our open space projects to be just outside of city limits, but within the Missoula urban area open space planning boundary. This is a map of that planning boundary and the cornerstones within that in kind of the purple colors or blobs there. Project location is highlighted in orange with the arrow pointing at the property. And this, this fits within one of the cornerstones, which includes riparian areas and river corridors. It's a very high priority in the open space plan, arguably the highest priority in the open space plan. As you know, we go through a pretty rigorous public process in vetting these open space projects. We look at open space bond purposes, and you can see that the checkbox is there for conserving and joining and enhancing open space land and providing public access to water and land, conserving in this particular case, fish and wildlife habitat and rivers and streams, providing open space, seeing the landscapes and trails and managing for growth. And then for the 2019 Missoula Urban Area Open Space Plan, natural resources, wildlife habitat preservation, scenic values. This protects parkland, and I think we've talked about this as being a pretty accessible public land if acquired and potentially having some trails on the property. And that's something that we've really been looking at as staff. And the property owner, Brian Tipp, really would like to have this property be public and be under city ownership so that people can recreate and enjoy, enjoy the wildlife and enjoy the property. In this case, agricultural lands is checked because of forests. There's a pretty substantial bit of forest on the property. And I mentioned riparian and wildlife corridors, as well as waterways and trails. So without going through all of these different ones, just kind of wanted to summarize that we look at the open space plan, obviously. We look at the open space ordinance, city ordinance 12.56, and how this aligns with the types included in the ordinance and the values. And you can see them all checked there. And then second from the right is state code, and that's open space types per 76.6 in state code. And then, of course, we look at the updated City of Missoula Strategic Colors and feel that this really helps satisfy community safety, health, and well-being, design and livability, and economic health. The project would protect quite a few conservation values, including terrestrial and aquatic wildlife habitat, pollinator corridors, non-motorized trail access and opportunities. Excuse me. The, the route of the Kim Williams Trail is actually the same and overlaps with the Future Great American Rail Trail Corridor, which is a national trail system proposed and led by the Rails to Trails Conservancy. 3,700 mile trail system from east coast to west coast. And it's pretty exciting that it just happens to be going right through Missoula. And so the Kim Williams Trail is part of that, as well as the Milwaukee Trail, and this property is adjacent to that corridor. Stenics views and vistas on the property, access and equity to natural areas, mitigating impacts, climate change, and educational resource potential, particularly for kids programming through Parks and Recreation. And mentioned programming potential and, and outdoor recreation and view shed benefits. So this area of city and particularly Kim Williams Trail was one of the first properties and corridors to be protected by open space bond funds, starting with 1980s open space bond. And so if you look at those, those early projects, they were very highly focused on the river corridor. Let's see here. I think I touched on most of those topics, so I'll skip that. Just to review some of the resource maps and the physical attributes of the site and proximity of the site. On the left-hand side, that map is showing conservation easements and protected areas. In this particular case, there's no easements, but there are protected areas in the light green owned by the city. The dark green is Forest Service property. On the right side, it shows current zoning, and again, it's located in the unincorporated area. So county zoning is resource and open lands. Both of these maps are land cover and vegetation maps and show generally that the site is covered in riparian and/or wetland vegetation. These maps are just lining up with our on-the-ground assessments of the property. And of course, we look at floodplain mapping for all of our projects, and this project in particular is covered by, by a large part of the floodplain. The current floodplain on the top there, the Hundred Year Floodplain is in red. The, let's see here. Excuse me. Floodway is in red. The floodway is an unbuiltable part of the floodplain. And then the floodplain, Hundred Year Floodplain is in pink, so you can see a large portion of the property is covered. And of course, in the draft updated floodplain on the bottom right, you can see that the floodway is pink and the Hundred Year Floodplain is blue. And again, that, that's covering a good portion of the property, although there still is some, some property open and outside of the floodplain. No, no soils of importance related to farmland. And again, we mentioned recreational access along the Kim Williams Trail. So we did quite a bit of research on this property. We spent the past year plus working with the landowner, visiting the site, and looking at the potential benefits of the city considering acquisition of the property. And as we talked with the county, we learned that there's an additional county riparian buffer requirement of about 125 feet from the edge of the river. And however, the zoning, current zoning does allow some form of recreational development. And we were, we were told that that could be something comparable to like, you would see like a restaurant at a ski resort or something, some kind of recreational support type business is technically allowed in that zoning. We're also currently talking with the landowner about water rights. And just a reminder that the Clark Fork River is a native habitat for bull trout, which is, which is a threatened species, and they require cold, clean, and complex habitats. So the landowner is willing and ready to contribute at least 51% of the total project cost for naming rights of the property. So per city ordinance, the, the landowner can donate that, have naming rights, and he would like to name it after his father, Ray Tipp, who owned the property prior and was a longtime attorney in Missoula and secretary from the Missoula Irrigation District for many years. And I'm showing pictures of the property as we go through, so that, that's a picture looking at the Clark Fork River. Already went over quite a few of the conservation values, but these photos help kind of illustrate that the vegetation is fairly in- is a fairly intact forested area, riparian and wetland area, direct access to, to the river and connects directly to the trail. We were pretty impressed as we walked through the property to see how much wildlife habitat was, was in really good condition. I should mention that there are some user-made trails, pretty short sections of trail in the property, on the property right now. There are some site constraints. The, the furthest west side of the property is pretty accessible. It's pretty level with the Kim Williams Trail. As you go further east and along the river, it gets pretty steep. It's tough to access, but there is really good access in that southwest side. So related to budget and funding, the property appraised for around $200,000. We estimate due diligence, which includes title report, appraisal, clothing costs and other, other applicable kind of costs at around $30,000. So total estimated project cost is 230,000. 51% of that is around 117,300. And so the ask of the open space bond fund is 112,700. Just to review the project timeline, the open space advisory committee started meeting about the project in October of 2024, did a site visit in November, level two application in January and voted on February 2025. And of course, we've already presented to the Climate Conservation and Parks Committee. The open space committee was, was overall supportive of the project. And I've, I've asked Ann Iverson, the vice chair of the open space advisory committee, to kind of talk a little bit about the discussions that OSAC had and provide any additional insight. And then I'll be available to answer questions.
Thank you, Zach. Ann Iverson, come on up.
I'm Ann Iverson. I'm the, yeah, I guess I'm now the vice chair of the open space advisory committee. And we looked at the property and went out and visited it. And when we voted, the majority felt that it was, since riparian habitat was so important for the open space bond and for the most recent post, and that there was a chance of development and the development might require access via the Kim Williams Trail to get to it. And the idea of recreational programming, the majority of the committee felt that the project should go through. There was concern that expressed about homeless encampments and people already not wanting, women in particular, not wanting to use the area because some people have been scared off. And the idea that a lot of it was already floodplain and/or in other ways constrained to prevent development. But that being said, the majority agreed that it should, we should use open space bond funds to purchase it. Kind of the synopsis?
Thank you, Ms. Iverson, and thank you for your service on the open space advisory committee. Before you sit down, just want to see if city council members have any questions for either Ms. Iverson or Mr. Covington. I see we've got some hands up, so Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, I have two questions. I'm curious, this seems like a really good deal. Is there a reason why 16 acres of property is going for $230,000? Is it access related?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And per the appraisal, there was comments in the appraisal about access. There's no officially recorded vehicular access to the property. But we, we've heard, as Ann mentioned, that, you know, there's, that doesn't mean that there couldn't be potential legal, you know, consideration in the future to try to pursue access. But yeah, I believe that's why, with all the comparables in the appraisal, they were all kind of more inaccessible, open space properties, low development potential. Overall, I believe that's why it's the lower cost.
Great, thank you. I'll just stop there. Thanks.
All right, you bet. And Counselor Vasika?
Thank you. On the referral, it says that it would be approximately $3,500 to $4,000 annually for, to manage the property. Where will those funds be coming from?
Yeah, that's a good question. That would be from a conservation lands management funds that we have. And so they would wrap that right into their, their regular work program. And it, it kind of depends on the level of development too in the future. If there's, if there's more trails constructed, which, which that's kind of the idea with this property is to have trails constructed, to have potential access site from the river to the property or from the, from the trail to the river. And that, you know, of course, could always increase or decrease costs depending on what, what that looks like. But the idea is to keep it a fairly natural property. So it wouldn't be like a developed park with really extensive or expensive maintenance or management.
Thank you. I'm all finished.
All right, you bet. And Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. With the 2006 portion of open space bond funds, it's just curious, generally speaking, with that particular bond series, is, is there an expiration date? Like we have to, is there a must-use-by date before we lose it?
It's a great question. They're generally 20-year bonds, from what I understand. And so we're, we're getting to the end of that cycle, of course. And so we've been advised by bond council to really try to expend those funds, obviously sooner than later. So the good news is with, with other, another project, the council approved with Hayden, you know, a conservation easement, along with a future project we're planning to bring to the council on the Milwaukee Trail Corridor, Milwaukee, or the MSO Airport property. Between those two projects and this property, we feel like we can close out that 2006 open space bond, which, which is great. It's, it's high priority to get that fund, that fund expended earlier if we can.
One more for me.
Certainly.
Has there been any outreach through this process with, I guess, perhaps DNRC or someone like that, as far as what the history has been with that parcel in terms of erosion with the site? Or if it's been modified or changed over the years? And what the implications are for any future flood event would have on that parcel, be it expansion or shrinkage of the lot size?
It's a great question. That's something that we have not dug, dug into really deeply. We've, we've looked at the historical use of the property. We've looked at the, at the records of the property. And it's, it's funny because the property doesn't go directly level with the river. It kind of drops off in the last, you know, 30, 40 feet of the parcel boundary down to the river. So it kind of has a little cliff that drops down. So the, the property owner hasn't ever seen it flood up above that. It's quite a drop. But of course, there's always potential for, for erosion. And that's, that's a really interesting point, an interesting question. There's a lot, there's a lot of vegetation and really mature trees on the property. So I would imagine that, that that would hold the soil integrity pretty well through a flood event, but no real signs of, of regular flooding on the upper part or that, that forested part of the property. That's a great question.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Campbell and Counselor Sheryl.
I just want to, thanks for being here. But when you said that the maintenance costs, when you were answering Ms. Vasika's question, when you said the maintenance cost comes from the open lands fund, doesn't it come from the open space stewardship levy specifically? Not from the general fund?
I think that's conservation land stewardship levy, I believe.
Okay, so it's a levy, it's not the general fund or the perks district. I just want to be really clear about that.
Yes, thank you. You're correct on that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. Any additional questions or either Mr. Covington or Ms. Iverson? All right, I'm not seeing any additional questions. Then that wraps up the presentation and questions. We'll go ahead and we will hear the main motion so we can open up the public hearing. And so I will turn it to Climate and Conservation Committee Chair, Counselor Savage, please.
Thank you. So I'll read the recommended motion, a resolution approving up to $112,700, including due diligence and related costs from a combination of 2006 and 2018 open space bond funds for the acquisition of the Tipp-Clark Fork River property of approximately 16.5 acres adjacent to the Kim Williams Trail.
Thank you very much. Motion's on the floor. This opens up our public hearing and open the floor to public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this agenda item this evening?
If I remember right, I rode through the area last year on a bicycle tour.
Identify yourself first, sir.
Big K, Montana.
Thank you.
I would leave that property just as is, a natural refuge area for the wildlife and minimize the interaction of the questionable people that may create problems for people that want to tour that area. I would leave that piece of property just the way it is, as a restic value into the floodplain system. Just let it evolve. And there are some natural trails there already that have been by people. It's just keep the questionable activity out of there.
Thank you for your comments this evening, Mr. Montana. All right. Any other public comment this evening? Not in the room here. How about members of the public online wishing to make comment this evening on this agenda item? All right. I'm not seeing any members of the public online raising their hand. That does wrap up then the public comment on this agenda item. We'll bring it back to council comments or questions and the other council comments before we take a vote. Counselor Melson?
Yes, I'll be in support of this investment for the Tipp-Clark Fork River property. I think it's a really smart and responsible use of our bond dollars to protect the riparian corridor and improve public access, which was the highest priority on the most recent Frost Survey, River Access. And to Counselor Campbell's point, you know, this bond was passed almost two decades ago. It's 2006. And it was a $10 million bond that voters approved back then. If you apply inflation, that would be worth $17 million today. So the loss of purchasing power means that we can't do as much with that money as we originally intended. So spending that down, conserving land like this, giving the public more access, creating a potential river access, I think is just a really smart and good fiscal use of those dollars. So I will be in support. Excited to go play in that property when we finally acquire.
Thank you for your comments. And Counselor Campbell, did you have additional comments?
Yeah, you did. Thank you, ma'am mayor. I've been kind of going back and forth on this in my mind. I had occasion to go out to the property this afternoon after the rain stopped and just kind of take a visual survey of the area. I didn't actually go down to the trailers realizing it's private property, though sometime in the past, as far as my law enforcement duties, I had occasion to go down there from time to time. But so I'm somewhat familiar with the property and the grades and whatnot. But I went out there this afternoon. There were a few campers out there, a few tents scattered about on that shelf down there in various areas. I would say too, there are a few mountain bikers that happened through the trail, come down Kim Williams. And I think it would be a fun bypass to kind of skirt up on the trail. One kind of parses off from the trail and you kind of go down and it kind of follows the river and goes back up again. So I could see where that'd be fun for mountain bikers, kind of going down the trail and using that kind of as a bypass. So I definitely see some value there. But at the end of the day, I'm going to be a no vote on this. I, I appreciate, you know, the near expiration, the 2006 series bond and the need to utilize that before the 20-year timeframe. And so I think though, it's been said, that'd probably be other opportunities coming up here in the future to allocate some of that money. I also, you know, looking at the property, I, I don't know whether the potential there'd be down there otherwise, other than the natural state it's in. It's about a half mile back on that Kim Williams Trail to get to it. And that's about a six tenths of a mile in length before the property ends on the east end of the property. I am concerned about erosion there and what that'd do to the property over time. You know, maybe 60 and a half acres over time would turn into 20 acres for the city. Maybe it'll turn into 0.6 acres for the city. And, you know, that rode out over time, I, I might have felt better if we had some more definitive study on that from DNRC or the subject matter experts in terms of, you know, what erosion potential is there. But for this particular project, you know, I know we need to look to, you know, spend that, that money, but I think there'll be other opportunities to spend in a way that's more thoughtful, deliberate and know that, you know, in the long term, that property is going to be there for continued use. And it's not something that could end up getting, you know, either eroded or vanished, or, you know, however you want to say it. But for, for this particular ask, I'll be no today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I am in full support of this for a couple of reasons. Having just offloaded a piece of property for which I could not access or secure access for, it's nice to know that it went to somebody who can keep the access going. And I think that this is a good case in point where somebody bought some property and they are able to use it probably the way that they originally intended to. And I think it is just really lucky that the city is able to get 16 acres of property on a river for less than a quarter million dollars. Because public lands are a great equalizer. They're a good economic equalizer. You don't have to have money to spend time on land that's owned by the government. And I think that that is an asset to us all. And so I think this is a really great and rare opportunity for the city to get some land and make sure that it stays natural, which will support, like my colleague said, the mountain bikers. I'm one of those mountain bikers that rides through there and, and on my gravel bike. And I, I, I think this is a steal, and so I'm really happy to support it.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Vasika.
Thank you. I, I have been against almost all, if not all levies that are on the ballot. I voted no for them, but they passed. And this is what the folks that are in charge of the spending of the open space bond want to do. I guess this isn't going to be a hill that I'm going to die on. I know that I'm really, I really advocate for not spent, for lowering our spending on every which way. But I guess this isn't really part of that. And we have to spend the, those dollars before we can't anymore. So I'm, I'm a yes, because like I said, this isn't going to be a hill that I'm going to die on.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Vasika. Any other council comments tonight? Nope. All righty. Then I think that wraps up our, our council comments. And we can do a roll call vote, Ms. Trimble, when you're ready.
All right, voting on the acquisition of the Tipp-Clark Fork River property, beginning with Basara.
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Melson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Sheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
Anne Anderson?
Yes.
That's 10 in favor, one opposed. The motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to staff and members of the open space advisory committee. Appreciate your presentation this evening and your good work on that project. Okay. We'll now move on to our last public hearing this evening. It is item 5.3. It's an ordinance amending the Missoula Municipal Code 10.22.240, Parking Commission Jurisdictional Area. We have the Missoula Parking Commission Director here, Jody Pilgrim, to provide our staff report. And take it away. It's all yours. Welcome.
Thank you. I have my business manager, Kellin, on virtually, and she's going to pull up the ordinance amendment so that we can see the language up on the screen.
It's like it could take a minute just to expand that so people could see it. It'd be great. Zoom in a little bit.
Are you able to see it? I have it shared.
We, we can see it. It's just a little small. We can see it. It's just a little small. So if you don't mind, and also, yeah, there you go. That bottom seems to, there you go.
There we go.
That's much better.
Much better. Thanks, Kellin. Okay, so I was able to come in here about a week and a half ago and talk to you about, give you an update on what we've been doing to work toward our parking plan. And specifically, we talked at that time about expansion of our parking jurisdiction. And the parking plan has several recommendations for for ways to expand our jurisdiction. One of them is to create a more adaptable parking program that can be expanded more easily. So the recommendation in the plan was to amend the ordinance language for 1022.240 to allow for City Council to adjust our Parking Commission jurisdiction boundaries through resolution rather than through ordinance revisions. So this is the first step in that process, and it is designed to help MPC to be a better support for the city as parking pressures change throughout the city. And I don't, I don't have a lot more to say about it. So I'm available to answer any questions that you have?
Any questions from council? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious, so how exactly do you feel that this is going to make modifying jurisdictional bounty, boundaries of the Parking Commission easier from the way it is now?
It's my understanding that when we amend the boundaries through ordinance revision, it takes more time. The process that goes through council takes more time, and resolution is faster. So this will allow us to bring forward maps to council that can be approved in, with just a quicker turnaround.
Follow up if I may?
Yes, absolutely. Sorry.
I'm not sure if this is for our council president or Dale, but so anything that would go through by ordinance at a minimum requires two sets of public hearings for a resolution. If we went that route, just take one, perhaps through committee, and then on to council, that would be it.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a, there's a first reading, which is the setting of the public hearing, and then the second reading, the actual public hearing. And then on orders, there's a 30-day waiting day, 30-day waiting period before it becomes effective. So in this case, where, you know, the Parking Commission's plan calls for a robust public process during, during which they would do those, conduct those, that public process to outreach the stakeholders and all those things prior to that, then there isn't the, then there isn't, there's a public meeting, but not necessarily the public heating with the, meeting with the north requirements. Then you wait that timeframe, and then also the 30-day waiting period.
Thank you.
All right, you bet. Any other questions from council members? Counselor Cheryl?
I was, yeah, I mean, I was just going to add that when a resolution would go into effect immediately. So, I mean, I think that's kind of what he was saying, but that, but we wouldn't have that 30-day. We would just pass it, and it would be done.
Thank you for that clarification emphasis. Any other comments from council? Okay. Not seeing any. You bet. Thank you, Ms. Pilgrim. So we'll go ahead and then bring this to here, the motion, so we can open it up for public comment. This is going to be to Counselor Basara, our Public Works Committee Chair.
Yes. I move that we approve an ordinance amending section 1022.240 Parking Commission Jurisdictional Area, Missoula Municipal Code, allowing City Council to change the jurisdictional boundaries of the Parking Commission by resolution.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion's on the floor. Public hearing is open, and we invite a public comment at this time. Anybody up for public comment on this agenda item?
BK Montana, I'm kind of confused. What is parking boundaries in regards to the city? Is that to determine where people can park and levy a fee for parking there? Or what is the parking boundary means? And could that be operated at the whim of whom and how and why? And who would want, be here to object at the whims of individuals in regards to the parking of the city that the city people have the right to realize before you address a situation at somebody's whim?
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment this evening? Any additional other public comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any in the room. Is there any online? And I'm not seeing any additional public comment online. Just give it a second here. All right, I see no hands raised. Then that wraps up our public hearing, and we'll bring it back to see if there's any council comments or additional council questions. And Counselor Vasika?
Thanks. I just wanted to address the question that was just asked for the jurisdictional boundaries. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it is to set the jurisdictional boundaries for fee parking. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Counselor Vasika. And yeah, yeah, please, Ms. Pilgrim, come on up.
I just want to clarify that we do not charge a fee throughout our entire jurisdiction. Our jurisdictional boundary is the area where we can manage parking, which includes some spots where we just enforce safety violations. It allows us to set up permit programs, and then it does include the Central Business District, which currently portions of we charge fees for. But for example, over by the hospital, which is included in our jurisdiction, there are several areas where we don't charge at all for parking, and we just enforce those for people parking the wrong direction or too close to sidewalks, or to crosswalks and yellow zones, fire hydrants, those sorts of safety violations. And also on the eastern edge of our jurisdiction, in the Central Business District, where it's primarily residential, we don't, we don't charge for parking over there either. So it's not a fee for parking. It's just parking management, which allows us to help move cars and.
Go ahead and a quick follow up. I really appreciate you following up with that. I just brought another question. So if you're outside of the the area that y'all manage, and you're parked on the wrong side of the road, isn't that a police matter, or is it just kind of like the police and the Parking Commission will look for those violations in the parking district?
So outside of our jurisdiction, safety violations are enforced by the police department. And inside of our jurisdiction, they're specifically enforced by us.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your question. Thank you. And Counselor Campbell?
Okay, we're in general comments at this point?
We are, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate the desire to want to streamline this process, but I'm going to be a no on this today. If folks are going to come into this jurisdiction and wake up one morning, and lo and behold, now they're subject to a new layer of regulation for parking within their neighborhood, I think we need that robust public participation that we have now with the ordinance process and a chance for people to come in to give comment. And I'm all for, you know, streamlining government, but when it comes to government imposing additional regulation on its citizens, we need to have that robust public participation. We need to be upfront. We need to be honest. We need to be transparent, and we need to have accountability. I think this, to a certain degree, kind of sidetracks that for the sake of expediency. And I think the cost benefit there, in my mind, weighs toward, given the folks that are in or around the jurisdiction as it exists now, the opportunity, you know, if it should be proposed to be expanded in one direction, way, shape, or form or another, the opportunity to come in and have adequate time to, you know, see what's going to happen, if they're going to come within the jurisdiction of the Parking Commission in the future, that they have the opportunity to come in and give comment and be part of the process, and for it to be deliberated openly, fairly, transparently, and with due process, and with that ability for folks to come in and, you know, actively participate in that discussion. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no to this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And Counselor Cheryl?
I just wanted to say that just like a resolution we would pass here, the public would still have the opportunity to come in and, and participate in the process. So I, I think it just streamlines things and, well, I mean, I, there is an opportunity for the public to participate. I think that's important, that that's on the record.
Thank you, Counselor Cheryl, and Counselor Anderson?
Actually, thanks, Ms. Cheryl. I actually wanted to call the Commissioner Director up to talk about the robust process that your internal regulations call for, because my understanding is this is basically taking away the duplicative nature of the fact that you already are charged with a fairly robust communication, public awareness, engagement process, if you were to decide to change or anything around the boundaries. And this just basically takes away us having to do the same thing over again.
Yes, that is accurate. Our current process for areas that we are looking at expanding into includes mapping the area, geofencing the area, and collecting utilization data. So that starts with us going and counting each individual space, and then setting it up in our license plate recognition system so that our scooters can drive through the area and count cars. And so that's where our public process starts. And we take a couple of months of that utilization data and start doing the public process around it, which involves placing that map on our Engage page for the public to comment on, and then going out to different community meetings to share information about where that map is, how people can have their voices heard. So we've, we've looked at the hip strip already, and we've started that outreach process through visiting with the Neighborhood Council for the Riverfront Neighborhood and for the University Neighborhood. And that will be the first expansion that we propose. Whether this amended ordinance language is passed or not, that will be coming to council. But that is a big, a big part of what we at the Parking Commission do already.
Yep, please.
Do you, are you required to send, I know when there's new housing, we have a boundary, sending a notice of a zoning change to people within 150 feet. Do you guys send out notices to the people in the proposed potential new boundaries, letting them know, hey, we're studying this. Here's how you find out more information. Here are the community meetings that you can come to.
Yes, that is a part of the process.
Okay. Thank you for your questions. Counselor Basara?
Yeah, I just want to say that I feel comfortable voting on this today with an expedited, if you will, process, because this expansion of the, of the boundary is based on a study. It's based on information that's at hand right now for the Parking Commission. And I think that expanding that boundary will allow for a thorough study and involvement with, with the neighbors, at which point I think it can be decided what the best way to approach the, the management of parking in those areas could be. So I feel comfortable voting yes on this tonight.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I do believe that wraps up all of our council comments. Did you have one more question, comment?
Follow up if I may?
Sure, you bet. Go right ahead.
Sorry, bringing it back up again. Just to follow up on something my colleague, Ms. Anderson, said. The process for notification of adjacent property owners, that's based on the process as it exists today, correct?
So we have not expanded our jurisdictional boundaries for 20-plus years. There, there is no process as of today. We're setting that process now through this parking study. Well, through the parking plan. And so what we have determined the steps to be for that process includes a notification that goes out to the neighborhood, and then participation in public meetings, posting maps on the Engage page, gathering feedback.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Any additional council comment or questions? I'm not seeing any. Then we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Ms. Trimble?
Happy to get our vote on altering, amending section 10.22.240 of the Parking Commission Jurisdictional Area, Missoula Municipal Code, allowing the City Council to change the jurisdictional boundaries of Parking Commission by resolution, beginning with Campbell.
No.
Carlino?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Basara?
Yes.
It's nine in favor, two opposed. That does pass.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for the conversation. And Ms. Pilgrim, thanks for coming down for the presentation and being available to answer questions. That does wrap up then our public hearings for the evening. And our next item of business is item number eight, which is the consent agenda this evening. We only have two items on the consent agenda. And so, Ms. Trimble, if you'll call those up and read them aloud, that would be great.
All right, the two items on this evening's consent agenda are both related to accounts payable. We did miss a week. So the first one up is a motion to ratify accounts payable or claims for checks dated April 29, 2025 in the amount of $820,222.07. And the second motion is to approve accounts payable or claims for checks dated May 6, 2025 in the amount of $914,374.91.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda tonight? I'm not seeing any. How about online? Not seeing any online either. Are there any members that wish to separate an item? Okay, not seeing any. Then we can do a voice vote on this one, please.
Voting on the two items on this evening's consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? And those pass unanimously.
Okay. Thank you very much. We now move on to number nine, regular business. And the one agenda item we have is 9.1. D under the Housing, Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee Report. This is in regards to 91DB. This is the Johnson Street Shelter Capacity Funding for Shelter and Housing Sprint. Counselors Carlino and Jordan are the sponsors. And on our regular business on items for, carryover for committee reports, I wanted to just review the, the council rules on this. We are here to present new information only. Counselor Jordan emailed the council this afternoon with some new information. And so that's what we would anticipate hearing from the sponsors this evening was a presentation on new information from the committee meeting dated April 23rd. So this was originally heard in the Housing, Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee on April 23rd. It is a recommended motion for a do not pass. It was a 10 to 2 vote on that. So what we'll do is we'll hear new information on this agenda item this evening. We'll make sure we have opportunities for council members to ask questions on that information. And then we'll make sure we have opportunity to hear from the public on new information provided, and then bring it back to council comments on that as well. So let's go ahead, and then we'll take a vote. So let's go ahead and get started then. And I will turn it over to, let's see. Councilwoman Jones is the chair of this committee, and in her stead will be Counselor Cheryl, who will do the motion. And shall we just start with the sponsors for the new information?
Yeah, I was going to say, I would think we would want more, the full information out there from the sponsors before. Yeah, I was gonna say I would think we would want more, the full information out there from the sponsors before the motions on the floor.
That sounds good. Can I turn to you, Counselor Jordan, for that?
Yeah, so I do want to apologize for getting these numbers to everybody just today. I realize that that's most likely not enough information or not enough time for people to really have a look. And it does come with some caveats. I do think that some of the budget is hard to understand and so I did work with a friend who's a budget analyst to try and help me find all of the allocations that we are, that we have directed to essentially implementing the ordinance 12.6. And I know it's controversial. The money that I found comes from existing positions and it comes from existing positions that I hold no personal grudge against the people in these positions, but I do believe these positions perhaps aren't achieving what we have set out for these positions to achieve, which is why I've added them in. I've also added numbers in for the three new positions that have been formed. Two of them are two compliance positions and one is a position that is open right now on the city's website for, I think, I think it was a landlord liaison and then just kind of all the allocations that have been set aside in our budget between fiscal year 25 and 26 to implement the ordinance. And again, I understand that this is money that has been allocated. And I understand that it does also affect people's positions, but the point I wanted to make is that as a as a constituent, I think it's hard to understand how we can come up with numbers for three positions when we talk about budget shortfalls and maybe I'm missing, I'm missing this, but I'm also speaking on behalf of my constituents who reached out and asked me about this. And I also think that it shows where our priorities are. Our priorities are really to enforce the the ordinance, which is definitely anti homelessness, in my personal opinion, because we are telling the folks where they can't go, but we don't have any resources for where they can go. So yeah, I've found quite a bit of money in our budget that would more than pay for keeping the Johnson Street Shelter open until we could ensure that every single person has permanent sustainable housing. And I think that may be all I have to add related to new information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jordan. And Counselor Carlino, did you want to speak to this as a co-sponsor or just checking in there? In terms of the information that was provided by, the budget information that was provided by Counselor Jordan, I would ask you, Counselor Carlino, to to stay focused on the additional new information tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to summarize and give my comments, the things that I haven't already said about this last Wednesday. So again, this resolution does three things. It, you know, directs the administration to either fund the Johnson Street Shelter or an alternative shelter site is one. And then two, it directs the administration to continue spending the budgeted funds on the Johnson Street Shelter to not reduce capacity each month like we're currently planning and just to allow people to stay there for as many shelter beds that we currently have. And then the third is just to to put, commit the city towards funding the housing sprint if if the $400,000 is not raised otherwise. And I guess just to summarize some short comments that I haven't already said, I think, you know, the housing sprint is good and I hope it works for as many people as it can in our community, but we all know that the vast majority of people who rely on the shelter will not be getting into housing through this effort. So while it's good, the city government is kicking the people out onto the street that that currently rely on the Johnson Street Shelter and I think we need more shelter beds in Missoula, not less. You know, years ago, when we talked about deconstructing this site, I introduced an amendment to ensure that we open up a new shelter before the city stops funding the Johnson Street Shelter because we all know that we're going to need that shelter space in our community and the need for it's just not going to go away. The city council decision to close the shelter without alternative options, without alternative options has been years in the making. You know, the majority of councils decided that they want to close a shelter without a plan for housing hundreds of Missoulians who depend on the Johnson Street Shelter as a lifeline. The people in our community who are using the Johnson Street Shelter are some of the most vulnerable residents. And the mayor and city council's decision to close it without alternatives is failing those most vulnerable residents in our community with, by not providing an alternative site before closing. And with enough shelter space in Missoula, the city is deciding or without enough shelter space in Missoula, the city is deciding to allow people to freeze to death this winter by not having you know, providing beds for those in need.
Counselor Carlino, I asked you to present on new information and this is a repetition of your presentation from the committee on Wednesday. If it's not related to the new information that's provided, I'll go ahead and move on now to other council comments. Thank you. All right, so sponsor presentations have been made. Spence, are you, are you going to speak to the new information that's been presented, Counselor Carlino?
Yeah, I have new information I did want to present. It's just a few more sentences if I could.
If it is not repetitive of your existing previous presentation, then we would appreciate hearing that tonight.
Okay, yeah, well, thank you for giving us the opportunity as sponsors to add some more information to this. So I just have a few more. After, you know, Donald Trump's Supreme Court overturned Martin versus Boise, local governments were then able to, you know, use criminal charges for people who are experiencing homelessness despite whether or not there's access to shelter. And because of, you know, the Supreme Court's decision, you know, it's helped guide Missoula's, Missoula government's budget priorities around homelessness. Which then the city council has passed local ordinances like the 12.60 to give misdemeanor charges for people who are survival camping or living in their vehicles. And I think rather than putting that as a budget priority towards criminalizing homelessness and adding to the budget for that, I believe that we should make a budget priority to provide shelter space and that's why I'm pushing this forward. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, all right, thank you. And now we'll move on to that is a presentation by the sponsors in terms of information relative to this regular business item. And so we'll now move on to questions from council members in regards to new information provided and I see hands raised. Counselor Becerra.
Thank you. I actually was gonna ask that either Ms. Jordan or maybe Claire could share the share the screen with the budget analysis that we got this afternoon so that we could actually ask questions on numbers that we can all see and that the the members of the public could also see if they're watching this. And then my other question for Ms. Jordan was, was that report in consultation with our staff or you know, some of the, I think I saw a couple of numbers that referred to staff and positions. Were those, did you, did you talk to any staff to find out how, how do we do this with with your proposal? I believe those were some of the questions we asked last week and all I saw was just a spreadsheet with numbers, but no answers to some of the questions that we had last week.
Yeah, thanks for the question. So my, my approach to this is to ensure that we are being effective and efficient with tax dollars and in my opinion, I don't think that the houseless team is actually affecting homelessness in Missoula as we outsource all of the frontline services. And so I'd like to see the funding that we're spending on those positions be used to do something that has a direct effect in in creating a greater good. So that is something that I think I will not be supported on at all by my colleagues, but I do think that when it comes to being accountable, we need to look and make sure that the positions that we have are doing the things that we expect them to do. And in my personal opinion, our houseless team is not affecting homelessness. It's being outsourced.
I have a follow up.
Please, go right ahead.
You know, I'm not trying to pick up idle here, but how do you, your personal opinion is not a budgetary decision. So what I really would like to see is what, what information do you have? What data do you have that tracks the efficiency and effectiveness of that group? And what does that translate in terms of money? Because we all have opinions, but opinions should not be, our personal opinions should not be what guide our budget decisions. So, you know, someone with a data background as you, I, it would be great to have that information in front of us. Some sort of analysis of how is this personnel or staff not being effective enough at using the tax pay yourselfers that we keep putting into that, those positions. So without, you know, having that information, it's really hard for me to make a decision. It's not because it's not gonna it's not because I don't like, you know, a referral. It's just, I think it's important for us and the public. It's, it is our job as representatives to make sure that we have all the information when we're going to make a decision and for the public to know that as well.
Counselor Jordan?
Thank you. I think the single biggest data point that we can use is that our houseless population has not declined. And so if we are spending for positions to address homelessness, but our houseless population is pretty stable, I think that's a really good indicator that the team isn't affecting the outcomes that they have been set out to do.
Quick follow up?
Please.
Do, and do you have, do you have those numbers? Can you, can you show us a a correlation or something that we can actually sink our teeth into when it comes to making a decision on an important matter like this?
Sure, yeah, I didn't bring those numbers with me. It would have been awesome to have gotten an email with that question. However, I do know that I got
That question was asked last week, Ms. Jordan.
And I will say that the homeless point in time count is a really good indicator of the fact that we haven't been able to adequately adequately address our houseless problem locally and also the wait lists on our subsidized housing that we offer is another good data point. And the fact that we see a visible increase in our houseless folks in this, in the summertime when they move out of the shelter and the fact that, you know, we do have 178 people in the Johnson Street Shelter who do not have a home right now. So without bringing a report, just basing off some numbers that I know exist from the homeless point in time count and the numbers of the shelters and the wait lists indicate that we are not being effective in articles that's set out in that team.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Counselor Nugent?
Thank you, Mayor Davis. Counselor Jordan, thank you very much for sending the email and I appreciate your willingness to engage in the conversation. In our kind of emails back and forth, you, I asked kind of if you had specifics and you said you had, which I kind of take to be that we should cut some of what is on your spreadsheet. So I have a couple of questions. One of those positions is a landlord liaison, which is something that I feel like you've advocated for in different capacities or in different conversations around council. So you not think that the city having a landlord liaison position within that housing team is a good idea or are you just kind of ranking those? How, how are you coming to that decision?
Yeah, thank you for the question. My understanding is that the landlord liaison position is to help with the housing sprint, which I personally don't support. I don't think it's going to be an effective approach. It's not meant to be a personal attack on anyone. I just think that it's probably not going to be the answer to all of our questions and solve the issue that we're looking at in closing the shelter.
Okay, I have a follow up on that. So because you don't think it's going to be successful, we shouldn't try it because it seems like one of the things in this broader conversation is trying to find outcomes that get people out of homelessness if there's a way to do that and helping people who might qualify for assistance or need credit repair or things like that would seem to be a step in trying to help people. So I guess I'm, I, I understand some of the broader stuff. I'm surprised some of the items that aren't on this list that, that you've talked about before. I'm just surprised by this one.
Yeah, I'd love to see what you think I missed in all honesty. And to answer your question about the housing liaison, I know that one exists in the county, one exists at the Pavarolo Center, and we also have the Housing Access Network who all do direct work with landlords to help people get housed. And so I think this position could be redundant and is specifically centered on the housing sprint, which I, like I mentioned, don't support.
But don't those, excuse me, follow, don't don't those positions rely on some of the work that the housing staff that you're proposing cutting does? Like, doesn't the coordinated entry system, for instance, help try and solve some of that? And isn't that run out of this office?
Yeah, I think that you might be asking two questions in one. And I did say that I do like having a dedicated staff member to the Missoula Coordinated Entry System. So as a data person, it is important to have an owner for that data and that data is really great, but we also heard from our housing staff that they're not using the Missoula Coordinated Entry System or the FUSLIS to prioritize housing through the housing sprint. And so I'm not sure how that data is being used in the housing sprint. And also I think my broader question is when we talk about budget shortfalls, I'm curious, and so are constituents, where we got the money for that position? And same with the two compliance positions.
Okay, I have a question about that later for you, Mayor. So you be ready.
I'm happy. I'm ready to answer them.
Another position or another item on this spreadsheet is the parking permit program, 225,300, which I, I assume, I guess is another item you're suggesting we could cut. That is something that came out of our discussions last year that it sounds like is actually working. We've, we've issued permits and we're allowing people to legally and safely live in vehicles following certain criteria. So that would seem to be a positive step to, to try and help people you know, exist and not criminalize it, which is something that your co-sponsor mentioned and actually referenced, slipping vehicles. So why eliminate that program?
I think that's a very good question. I question how much it costs to implement it. And that perhaps it's part of the compliance program generally. And so it is something that I wonder why it costs a quarter million dollars when that generally could be at least three positions. And so it's just, again, it's more questions about the specifics of these budget items than perhaps the merit on some of them and where the money comes from in a pinch and how we're choosing to, to focus this money. We, we do know that we need various forms of crisis housing, which includes in a lot of areas, places for survival camping, dry shelters, wet shelters, car camping. And so I think that when we focus on kind of bits and pieces of the whole spectrum, it does create more problems, but I also am wondering just why it costs so much to, to run that program, even if it is effective.
I appreciate that and I appreciate your willingness to kind of engage on that. I know it's certainly not your intention. I worry a little bit about similar to what's happening at the federal level with all these Doge cuts where they're just you know, kind of firing broadly that people don't take into account that there's, there's actual costs to implementing programs. And I worry a little bit about that parking one, that there may just be stuff that we don't completely understand, but I appreciate your willingness to back forth. I have one more question for you and then a question for the mayor, if that's okay.
It certainly is, you bet.
Sorry, may I just make a comment on what you mentioned?
Sure.
In talking about kind of like questioning costs and cutting and what the implications might be, I do, I do think a lot about our criminal justice system and how we are required by statute to pay for everything related to due process and how 1260 is going to put a burden on our criminal justice system. That is something that is not a part of these calculations that is really hard to measure, but seems to be something that nobody's really asking questions about. I, I do anticipate that we're going to really heavily affect our criminal justice system will, that will affect our tax dollars as well.
Well, one thing I think is interesting, just to follow up on that, is, is much of those costs are very real, but they don't come from the city's budget. Much of them come from the county's budget outside of the prosecution, the city attorney, because we don't pay the jail fees, we don't pay the court fees. So I mean, in this broader conversation about money, it's important to recognize that we wouldn't be able to say, we're saving money here, let's shift it because it's not ours. Question for you though, and this is maybe a tough one tonight. I think it's bigger than just right now, so I just kind of want to put it out there and, and it's a sensitive topic. I don't want to offend anybody, but you mentioned kind of outcomes and you know, there, there seems to be some shifting conversations nationally around best practices in shelters and that somewhat this model that we do in Johnson, that's low, low barrier maybe isn't creating the best outcomes for people. How, how can we balance that? Because it seems to me like if we have limited funds, we might be better off investing in other areas that, that we know are improving outcomes and that some of that national research right now is saying that we might be I don't want to use the word enabling because I don't think that's fair, but disincentivizing people from utilizing any of the other resources. So I would just, how do you kind of balance that in your, in your calculations?
Well, I do think it depends on who you ask. I think there's a couple of things that I think about when you ask I think there's a couple of things that I think about when you ask that question. I think first of all, when we're looking at being effective and efficient with limited tax dollars, we got to do what we can afford. I worry that if the housing sprint is successful and that we can actually get people housed, how are they going to maintain that? There is no long-term plan for how these folks are going to be able to continue to pay the rent if they even are able to get housed in the first place. More specifically, I went to one of the meetings and a fellow there said, I'm a convicted felon. I have a full-time job. How are you going to get a house for me when I can't get one for myself? And so I think that we need to offer various types of, of housing stability and within what we can afford. And we are not a rich town, and I think that the shelter, depending on who you ask, has, has been a good place for people to, to get support. I'm not sure if all of you had a chance to read the letter that for, that was forwarded by Jill Boni, by one of the workers from the Pavarolo or the, the Johnson Street Shelter, who talked about the community of support and care that exists in the shelter between the, the residents and the staff, and that they, they see it as a safe place and a place where they can get the services they need. So I do think it depends on who you ask about whether or not the Johnson Street Shelter has been effective. I would argue that a lot of our frontline service providers think it's absolutely essential, and they're the ones who are working with it. And I think best practices show that we need a continuum of care. And again, I just am concerned that we, even if we successfully house these people through the housing sprint, how are they going to maintain their rents? That is my big concern. And then I, I worry about the impacts of 1260 and seeing an increase in survival camping criminal violations. We just saw our legislature raise the minimum, the minimum fine of $500, which I don't, I don't know how folks are supposed to pay. So it, you know, it's definitely, it's an organism, it's a big system. We can't just kind of look at one piece of it.
My, my understanding is that that, that doesn't necessarily apply to us if we have specific fines in our ordinance, and our ordinance does not have a $500 fine. I, I also worry a little bit, and this is a conversation you and I can have offline, but I do worry a little bit that it's taboo in this conversation to talk about anything negative that we hear about that happens at Johnson Street. And I think it's, it's important to note in the conversation that we do hear a lot from first responders, from other public entities that have to engage there, that there are some drawbacks and there are things that are concerning as well. So I, I think that that's important, but I appreciate that. Mayor, I was hoping that you, you could maybe be, expand on these numbers a little bit more or ask Dale with expanding on them a little more if you want to. But, because I, it seems to me that some of these numbers might be polling from places that, like double book. Like, a lot of the stuff that CPDI seems like it's coming from the enforcement that would be coming from the Parks and Roads District that's already mentioned there. So I just want to get a feel for if somebody can explain kind of what the, what the numbers are.
Yeah. Mr. Bickel, I'll take a stab at this and would appreciate any backup, if that's all right. Okay.
Great. So yes, thank you for providing the funding source document that you did. Ms. Jordan, and as staff, we, we didn't have a chance to, we were not asked and didn't have a chance to inform any of the conversation, but we did take a look at this prior to the council meeting tonight. In general, and, and you do see that Counselor Jordan has a note here that the total amount assumed or estimated of over three, well, 3.172 million dollars may actually be less. She was not sure, and you were not sure, if it was a duplicate of the CPDI. These numbers are, are actually in triplicate. So the, the funding, the total amount of compliance budget is $980,000 and 980.53. That is largely funded through the Road and Park District. The Road and Park District cannot fund a single source like the Johnson Street Shelter. So that's why that, those funds are not eligible. So in total, out of the numbers that you've been provided this afternoon, approximately 1.2 million dollars is made available through, for our various addressing houselessness and, and compliance. That $300,000 is the houselessness staff budget. So just remind folks that that includes four different staff persons, one of which is currently grant funded. These programs are our continuum of care program. The continuum of care is something that enables our homeless service providers to continue to receive HUD funding. And we are the ones that both collect information and provide that information to the federal government. We coordinate with the continuum of cares across the state of Montana in order to prepare the one and only HUD budget that HUD permits from the state of Montana. So our city staff are the ones that help that funding source continue to flow through to our service providers for direct services to folks that are houseless. Second of all, we provide funding for and support of the community, excuse me, the Missoula Coordinated Entry System. The Missoula Coordinated Entry System has, is a, is a, is a great and vast improvement from several years ago, where we coordinate across four main points of entry in the city of Missoula, thereby reducing duplication for people that are living houseless in the community so we can streamline access to services and housing. The city of Missoula basically provides the administrative support and coordination amongst all of our service, homeless service partners across the city. The, lastly, we, we do have some administrative support to help with this effort. And, and the last position I mentioned that was grant funded is our Built for Zero program. The Built for Zero program is something that we are focused keenly in to make sure we're using data and results to actually reduce our houselessness numbers. I will take this moment to say that we are under our pre-pandemic homelessness numbers. And that is saying something in a community that has had exceptionally high real estate prices that go through the roof. So our coordinated entry and our by-name list actually show that our folks living houseless, whether that be in shelters, and that include, that's inclusive of the YWCA or that's inclusive of the temporary safe outdoor space. And then the Pavarolo Centers facility on Broadway and Johnson Street, amongst a few others, that's inclusive of all those and folks that we can find living outdoors. Those numbers are, have been reduced to under pre-pandemic levels, largely because of the efforts of the staff that I just mentioned. In addition to the work that we do, you know, you just heard from other staff members that are here tonight managing our, our Housing Trust Fund and other entitlement funds that we're able to get out the door to our partners in the form of grants and other things. That effort has largely also resulted in reduction of folks and an increase in homelessness. So I think we've all seen the number nationwide on average over the last year. So the national average is an 18% increase, and that number is not the same for Missoula. And that is because of the efforts that we've been providing to be the backbone of the houseless service system in the, in the city and something that our service partners are not able to provide. So long answer to tell you that of 1.2 million that is allocated to these efforts, $980,000 is coming from the Road and Parks District. $100,000 is grant funded and about $200,000 could be reallocated to shelter expenses. That's one, less than one month of operational costs at the current clip of 1.85 million. Did I answer your question effectively?
You did, yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Counselor Nugent, good on questions?
Oh, I feel like I've probably hit my limit, but you might come around to me again.
All right, all right. We'll move on to another council member. Counselor Anderson.
Thanks so much, Madam Mayor. So just to clarify your explanation of the numbers, you know, the, a lot of the numbers that are listed here in the left side of the column, such as implementation of 12.6, encampment response, funding of 12.6, parking permit program, actually are already contained and reflected in the $980,053.
That is correct.
So that is, it, it does not actually equal one point or 3.172, did I say those numbers right? 3,172,576 dollars. It's 980,000.
That's correct.
Okay. So, and then on the other side, the left or the right side, my understanding is that the two new compliance positions are also already reflected in the $980,000 budget. So that honestly, it's only the $300,000, which is the department that you just listed that does all the stuff.
Yes, both of those statements are accurate, and I will also fill in some information here because Counselor Jordan, you asked where the landlord liaison position is being funded, and that's being funded out of a vacant existing full-time employee in our CPDI department. And it is largely focused on the housing sprint. We are using that existing staffing position because we saw success with the pilot program that we presented to you over the holidays, using, again, our Built for Zero program. The whole idea of the Built for Zero program is that we are using data to make data-informed decisions. And that program, we identified 15 homeless veterans and they had four different types of scenarios. So they're not, they don't all look the same. And I use the example, some of them were honorably discharged, for example, and some were dishonorably discharged. And that means that there are different services or, or resources available for those individuals. And 12 of the 15 found housing. We were able to help them connect to, to housing. And 11 of 15 of those folks are housed today. It's roughly about a 75% success rate. It's something that we need to keep an eye on. You know, this is not something that has been in place for a long time, and we hope that folks will continue to have support in, in their, their housing situation so they can remain successful. And, you know, one of those folks had a criminal record, and a lot of times, that's exactly right. A lot of times, folks with criminal records are declined from the application process. And so that is the real-world data and examples we have from the Built for Zero effort, excuse me, the House for the Holidays effort that we made in that 60-day period, where we can actually work with landlords to figure out how it is that we can reduce the, the issues and the risk that they perceive when they are renting up an apartment or a home to somebody that has greater barriers than somebody in, in the conventional market. And when we're able to address some of those issues, we're able to actually get over the hump of these barriers and help folks get into a home. It's radical common sense. We're going to keep using it.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the additional explanation for kind of the design behind the housing sprint. My question is from Ms. Jordan in regards to where did these numbers come from? I know you talked a little quickly about it in the beginning, but if you could reiterate that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, this is from poring through the budget and just seeing things that were labeled related to urban camping. And so there have been transfers that were hard to follow, which is why I thought that a million might have been duplicated. But it looks like there was some more transfers that I couldn't find in the budget. And so I think in all genuine honesty, having this conversation on the council floor, where we pick it apart and, and talk about the things that constituents have reached out to me about when they look at the budget is super helpful. It's not easy to read the budget, and I think that if anything else comes out of this conversation, it's that we've talked about the money that we're spending on our efforts to address houselessness, because it's really hard to read the budget, and folks try.
I appreciate that. Did you send these numbers to Dale before you sent them out to council and the press?
I did not, no. This, and the reason why in all, is because I wanted to show what I found, not necessarily to, I wanted to show what I found, because this is kind of how people see it. And it's not meant to be, the city's lying, it's that this is an average person looking at the budget, and this is what I found. And now we're talking about it. We've got somebody from the press in our audience right now, tonight, who can report that the budget was, you know, that we found where all this money is. So no, and I was on holiday all last week, and so I did mistakenly get this out to everybody late. But no, I didn't run it past, run it past them on purpose, because I wanted to show my process for finding these numbers.
Great. And this isn't a flippant question. This is an honest question. Will you and your co-sponsor withdraw your resolution? Because we now show that the numbers do not support any ability to keep the Johnson Street open beyond this, because as we've discussed in this process, you know, it's really 1.2 million dollars that the city is spending on a much more comprehensive, you know, set of implementations and processes and people who are addressing the wide spectrum of unhoused in our community and of those, you know, the vast majority, $980,000 of that is coming from the Road and Park District, which is not legally allowed to be used for repurposing to the Johnsons' Shelter, even if we did want to fire or, you know, cut back on the compliance office. So I, I would, I would like to see you guys to withdraw this resolution.
That is a request on the floor to the sponsor. Thank you. I, I see Daniel has his hand up too, and I'd love to allow, give him time to speak. But yeah, respectfully, no, I don't want to renew the, revoke this. I, I believe that we are setting ourselves up for a bigger financial strain. I know Mr. Nugent spoke about how, you know, the city doesn't pay for the jail, but constituents do. And so I think that if we are enacting a policy that is going to add a burden to our criminal justice system by an increase in tax dollars, it doesn't matter if it's, if it's a city policy or not, because it's taxpayers in general. And I also think that we need to have a continuum of care, and I would like to, to see the city do this and keep this conversation going. So I appreciate that you want me to withdraw, but I, I don't want to. And I'd like to, if it's okay, let Daniel speak to that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Carlino. The question to you is, are you interested in withdrawing your resolution this evening?
Yeah, thank you for the questions and for the conversation. And, you know, this resolution does more than just direct administration to continue to fund the Johnson Street Shelter or an alternative site. It also, you know, directs us to not lower capacity on the shelter. In the meantime, we've already paid for it in this fiscal year. So if people need those shelter beds, I think we should at least pass that part of the resolution to ensure that we're not going to take beds away in case people do need them, as well as, you know, if we somehow don't reach the $400,000 goal for the housing sprint, this resolution also, you know, directs the city to cover some of those costs. But no, I, I really think that, you know, we should be directing the administration to fund the, the Johnson Street Shelter for another year or an alternative site, because without it, I think we're going to be causing a humanitarian crisis around town. And the costs go far beyond what's on this Excel sheet here. You know, we've got plenty of indirect costs where we're increasing like the police fire budgets, the mobile crisis, mobile support team, jail capacity, all of these other things that we're using cost millions of dollars to basically push the most vulnerable members of our community around in circles and criminalize them. So I think there's a lot more expenses that aren't on the sheet. And overall, I think we can't afford not, not to fund shelter beds for people. And I think it's not only the humane thing to do, but also the fiscally responsible thing to do opposed to the alternative. So in short, no. Thank you, though, for the questions.
All right, you bet. So Counselor Anderson, does that wrap up your questions or do you have any additions?
So then my question is, how are we funding the three things that we want to do with this purpose of this resolution? Direct the administration to fund the Johnson Street Shelter for another year with, with money? Fully fund the housing sprint, you know, that's a community collaboration with United Way and Pavarolo and a lot of other stakeholders that we are a part of and that the house, you know, the folks who are, you know, identified here as potentially, you know, ability to be fired, to reallocate resources are the people who are actually running the program. And fully fund the housing sprint. Thankfully, we got an update last week that they are well on their way to reaching their fundraising goal, and we'll get more update from that. But if it doesn't, then we fill it in with what money?
No, let Daniel take this one if you want to, Daniel. But actually, I might, I might just actually say really quickly that most of the money that has been generated for the housing sprint to date has been from the MRA, from the county and from the city.
So we are, I'm sorry?
Counselor Carlino, do you have a answer to Counselor Anderson's question?
Yes. So it, it only, this resolution only calls for funding for the housing sprint if in, in the scenario, we're not able to raise that money from outside sources. If we are, that's great. And then if we aren't, then this resolution, that therefore clause would come into effect. And I think certainly we could all debate and disagree on where we would want the funding to come from. But this resolution is similar to many resolutions that the city council passes, is that we're directing the administration. is that we're directing the administration to include this into the city budget and essentially letting the administration decide what things they would want to cut in the first budget. And then as city council, we could add or, you know, cut or add things as well. I could, you know, keep suggesting things to cut instead. I think, you know, partially, we should fund it from our MRA remittance, but not the full thing. I think we should cut some of the enforcement and criminalization of homelessness instead to help fund the shelter, which I think, you know, would help solve the problem upstream rather than spending a bunch of money on trying to stop people from camping around town, sleeping by the rivers or in their cars, which we know we're going to have to be, keep pumping more and more money into if we're not going to provide shelter beds for people. So basically, the resolution directs the administration to include it in the budget and then they would decide what to cut. But we as council could also decide. I think, you know, we're probably not going to come to a majority on what things we would like to see, to see cut instead. But this resolution calls to include this for another year.
Can I ask a follow-up to you, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So did either one of these sponsors sit down and ask you how you came to the decision of deciding we no longer had the funds to continue Johnson Street? And did you and your CAO go through an extensive budget review process to see what opportunities there were to reallocate funds to continue to keep the Johnson Street Shelter open?
To answer your first question, no, neither sponsor approached me to discuss how I came to the decision nor in preparation for this resolution or tonight's conversation. And then secondly, yes. Dale Bickel, Chief Administrative Officer, and I and others at the city most definitely have been taking a very close look. And this is not new news. I mean, I'll just take a brief second to remind the council and members of the public that this conversation's been very transparent for some time, as well as our homeless service providers. And the person, the entity that we contract with, the Pavarello Center, we've been very transparent and open with from the beginning about the limited funds. When we were able to put together the funds for FY '25, we were clear that it was a one-time-only opportunity as we were continuing to work on the strategy to address homelessness, which is now complete and organizations are adopting that. And so this is, is something that we have examined, whether we had the resources for and believe firmly that we do not unless we are going to cut core services at the City of Missoula.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all my questions for right now.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counselor Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I think a lot of my questions have been asked. I don't think they've been answered sufficiently though. So I'm, maybe I'll, I'll try to ask the question in a different way. I mean, the reason that we're closing the Johnson Street Shelter is because we don't have money to fund it. We used ARPA funds for a big portion of it. So last week, I had asked the sponsors to come with a plan, which, you know, we're going through this. It doesn't add up to the amount of money that we need as Ms. Anderson said. And there's no... So I mean, okay, I guess my question then is, since we can't use road district, we can't use park districts, the people that have given, the entities that have given us that money for the housing sprint, maybe not all of them, but certainly the county gave it to us for the housing sprint. So we can't just use that for whatever we want. I mean, do you want to just not... Do you want to cut the Built for Zero, the Veterans Housing Program? Do you want to cut the cleanups by the river that save the river from refuse going in it? Do you want to cut the HUD liaison person? I mean, there's no, there's no plan here, just like there wasn't a plan on Wednesday. And going through the budget and looking at the budget is not a plan either. So do you want to cut, are you saying you want to cut those things that I just listed? And I would like both sponsors to answer, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. I think really what I'm ultimately trying to do is represent. We have been asked by our community to provide a place for our unhoused to go. And what I want to do is ask this body and our mayor to consider that this is what our constituents want and perhaps that we need to renegotiate the budget and include a plan for looking after our unhoused people who will maybe not have housing through the housing sprint. I am asking for us to really look at our programs and their effectiveness. And we definitely disagree on what should and shouldn't be cut. But I have brought a plan forward. It's just not popular. And I, it aligns with a direction that I'd like to see us go, which is really based on representation and really ensuring that the programs that we're spending money on are effective and that we are looking after everybody in our community.
Mayor, may I, before, I know Daniel's hand's probably up. I can't see him in the meeting a weird way. Could I ask you a question then?
Yep. And then I know, and I believe you wanted to hear from Counselor Carlino. But you can ask me a question first.
I do, but, but the other question I would like answered, and Ms. Anderson was getting at this, I think. You have reached out to all council members and offered for them to meet with you regularly. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have the sponsors of this bill taken you up on it? Because you and I meet regularly and we discuss the budget in depth. So I'm not taking that opportunity to do that if they have not. Doesn't seem like they're, that they're doing all their homework. So are they meeting with you regularly like the other council people are?
Counselor Jordan just resumed her meetings with me. We had a meeting last week, I mean, last month, sorry. But this topic was not brought up. Counselor Carlino and I do have regularly scheduled meetings. And Counselor Jordan and I now have regularly scheduled meetings on the calendar. However, Counselor Carlino did not schedule a meeting specifically to talk about this.
I'd just like to add to that. Respectfully, I have been trying really hard to make meetings with you and they keep getting rescheduled or canceled. I know I did take a big break and I tried to start our meetings in February and you were, you were unavailable until April and we met in April. And I just had my next meeting canceled and there's no reschedule and I'm not on this calendar.
But you will be.
Awesome. Thank you.
We'll get you rescheduled. But we did meet last week or last month. We'd already announced the housing sprint. We had announced the closing of the Johnson Street Shelter. We did have an opportunity to bring, you had an opportunity to bring it up and you did not.
Yeah, thank you. Look, and I also just want to reiterate that this is, there's more to this referral than just funding the Johnson Street Shelter. It's about presenting information in a way that works for a lot of people and having that conversation on the council floor. It appears to a lot of folks that this was kind of a line, a decision that was made without consultation. And through this meeting, we've been able to really parse out the budget and the plan to answer some questions that I think people haven't felt like they've had answers to.
Okay. I appreciate that very much. And we'll continue to be, we'll continue to provide this information as we have to you in committee meetings and at council meetings before. So we'll continue to be repetitive on that information to make sure people catch it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, so I mean, presenting information in a way people understand, saying there's $3.2 million to fund the Johnson Street Shelter. I wouldn't, I would push back that that's not presenting information in a way that people would understand. But I am curious to hear, again, and I'm sorry, Daniel, if you have your hands up. I can't see who's up and whose hands up or not. But I would like to know if you are interested in cutting the Veterans Housing Program, Built for Zero, if you're interested in cutting encampment cleanups around our river and in our park. A lot of those are complaint-based, so they're constituents asking us to do that work. And there's something else I wanted you to comment on. What was the other one? The HUD and if you want to cut the liaison position for HUD. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice.
I think those are all, you know, worthwhile things to fund. And neither me or Councilwoman Jordan suggested cutting any of those things. So I'm a little bit confused by this question. I did bring up the fact that we could do an MRA remittance that would, you know, a big portion would go back to the city and county that could be used to fund the shelter or a big, large portion of the shelter. Along with, I've suggested cutting things like, you know, rather than adding towards criminalizing homelessness and all the millions of dollars spent on that with like police, extra police and policing of this new ordinance, the code compliance, new code compliance hires, things like that, I think would be worthwhile to, to cut and solve this problem upstream of, you know, providing shelter spaces for people rather than spreading that problem around town. And then that also gets at, you know, one of your things that you asked with, you know, the cleanup costs for things. You know, we would have a lot less to clean up if we provided places for people to sleep safely indoors. So I think we're going to see a lot, a lot more money put towards, towards those things. But no, none of us suggested cutting any of those things. And I did list some things that, that could be cut in exchange. Like, for example, you know, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, a year towards, you know, market rate housing, redevelopments through MRA costs. And I think, you know, we should really be looking out for the most vulnerable in our community rather than, you know, putting money towards, you know, redevelopments for market rate unaffordable housing. So I think that's part of how it could be funded. And then also, I think, just like rather than, we wouldn't need to hire more and more police and code compliance to, to work on people camping around town if we, you know, solve that problem with more shelter and housing space.
May I have a follow-up?
Sure.
The, the form that was sent today that came, the 3.2 million, it's not really that, that much, that was cutting positions that fund all those things that I just asked you about. And I, if you have $3, you cannot spend 10. I mean, that's just not how it works. And so we don't have $10 to spend. So I, I don't, I don't, as I said on Wednesday, I don't see a plan here. I don't see funding here. I don't, I, no one, the mayor is saying we don't have that money. So if you want to find that money, you have to figure out where it is. And the thing that was sent to us by Ms. Jordan today absolutely cut all those things. If you're cutting those positions and you're not talking to staff about what those positions do and how they support the city's work, I mean, it is a Doge approach to just slashing everything. You need to understand what those positions are doing so you, so you know, you know, what you're cutting. And that absolutely is what is being cut based on the thing that we were sent this afternoon.
All right, that wraps up that. Two council councils, Counselor Vasika.
Thank you. I just wanted to circle back to something that Ms. Jordan said earlier that I can't really wrap my head around. So this question is for either Mr. Bickel or you, Madam Mayor. Why does it cost so much for the vehicle sheltering permit program is almost a quarter of a million dollars? And I'm not well-versed in how to operate a permit program. So if somebody could shine some light on what all, all those dollars go to.
Mr. Bickel?
Dale Bickel, CAO. Yeah, there, so there's the components of it largely, the biggest piece of that are, are two, it's, it's a FTE level of effort to do it. And so with two full-time people plus, you know, fringe benefits, vehicles, and then there's also the out-of-pocket expenses we have. We do garbage collection and those kind of cleanups. All of those fees associated with that are all part of that program. So that's, that's where that comes from. But it's primarily driven by the FTE support of it.
Yeah, personnel, yep, that all makes sense. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
All right, you bet. And Counselor Nugent, more questions?
Just a couple. I want to clarify one thing. The, the comment about who pays for what in the criminal justice system wasn't because I don't think it's important that taxpayers have to fund all these things. In fact, I've made comments over and over again that I, I think that the federal and state governments are failing on this issue and it's falling more to local taxpayers. But it was getting at the kind of broader thing, which is, you know, I asked the question on the floor earlier and in an email, which was what specifically are we going to cut to get to 1.8 million? And cutting something that lowers those costs doesn't do anything for us, whether it's important or not. We can debate that because it, it doesn't give us money to fund the Johnson Street Shelter. And so I think what, you, you hear the frustration of some of my colleagues around the floor tonight. And I would like to ask you and Mr. Carlino both, like, what specifically are we going to cut to get to 1.8 million dollars to keep it open for another year? And I have a follow-up for Daniel after that. But do you, like, do you have a specific? Because like, like we've said, you've indicated, yeah, let's cut these things. Then we ask specifics and, and the answers for both of you are like, well, we're not saying cut that. There are other things that have come up previously, like security. Mr. Carlino just referenced police officers. I think it's important to note that a lot of these positions, like the park staff and the public work staff and the police officers aren't just hired to do this. They do other things as well. So what are the specifics to get to 1.8 million? Do, do you have that?
Yeah, look, I appreciate your question very much. And I think we have a difference of opinion. I would like to see these positions redone, if nothing else, to make sure that they're bang for buck. But, shoot, just lost my point. I think that what I've noticed since being on city council is, in my, again, my opinion, is when there's a will, there's a way. And right now, having a shelter is not, it's just not our priority. And I wish it was because I think it's really necessary. And I think we're going to see a lot of negative collateral consequences to closing the shelter, even though we can't use the funding we've been using. And I think I'll leave it at that because I'm just going to start repeating myself.
Thank you, Counselor Jordan. And did you want me to have this sponsor, Counselor Carlino?
I was hoping Mr. Carlino would speak to that as well. Okay.
Yeah, I feel like, you know, we've been going in circles a little bit about this, but I've suggested MRA remittance to pay for part of it. I'm open to compromise on just funding the shelter for the winter so we ensure that people aren't, you know, freezing to death without shelter beds. I also think rather than hiring more code compliance and, you know, more and more police to respond to people illegally camping and giving them misdemeanor charges, that we should provide shelter beds that would prevent some of those things. Those are a few examples. You know, I, I think, yeah, I'm open to compromise on other things. But I think, you know, it's a little disingenuous to act like the council wants the shelter, but just, we just simply don't have the money. I think it's just not a budget priority. And other things are a higher budget priority than funding for shelter. So I'm suggesting that we make this a higher budget priority and, you know, cut some of those other things that I just mentioned or other things that we can compromise on. But, you know, the closing of the shelter without an alternative has been years in the making. You all had the resolution years ago to, to deconstruct the shelter. And I put forward an amendment to say before we close it that we have an alternative space set up. And you were strongly against that. And, you know, to act like the only issue is funding is not really true. It's just, it's just that it's not a funding priority for this council opposed to other things. And, and that's unfortunate. But I, I think we're just disagreeing on what funding priorities are. And I think that, you know, providing shelter space and services is a higher priority than some of these other things. So for samples of things to cut, I'm saying MRA remittance and then some of the efforts towards enforcing 12.60 and, and the criminalization efforts. That's some examples.
So specifically, no specific numbers to get us 1.8 million? Just broad examples and statements that kind of say, we've got the money if we want it. But then no specifics, just, just those?
Well, the specific is the MRA remittance.
So, great. I'm glad you brought that up. I want to ask you a follow-up question on that. Do you understand what percentage of the, of the dollar from an MRA remittance that we get to keep when we do a remittance?
It's around 30% to the city plus for the county. And, you know, you know, in the past, the county has been a partner for us for some, funding the shelter. So ideally, we would use some of that. And I think that would be better, in my opinion, than, you know, using that, using, you know, that money towards funding, you know, market rate slash luxury housing. And then plus the schools would also get more money in that, in that instance as well.
So have you, two follow-ups. Have you spoken to the commissioners on if we did a remittance, if they would be willing to send it back?
I have not. It seems like they are also wanting to close the shelter.
I would also, since the MRA funding keeps getting referenced, I would like to ask Ms. Buchanan to come up and speak a little bit to, I mean, maybe broadly, and this is a much broader conversation, but how the funding breakdown is, we, we keep hearing reference to the... to the MRA funds luxury housing, but there's a lot more that it does do. And I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to efforts that, that the city has worked with the MRA to, to support some of our housing or low income housing or permanently affordable housing, or even some of our unhoused initiatives that have utilized MRA money.
I think we're on there.
Is this all?
Yes.
Okay. Ellen Buchanan, Director of the Missoula Redevelopment Agency. I'll try to speak to that. I'm, I'm a little perplexed by the references to MRA funding luxury housing. I can't think of a single project that we have funded, and I may be overlooking something, that would be considered luxury housing. We certainly have funded projects that are market rate housing. And we have some that are, are in the works as we speak that would be market rate housing. But we've also funded an awful lot of housing projects that are income qualified. And in fact, are working on some right now that will be permanently income qualified. And the majority, a lot of the ones that we do are just because of the nature of the funding sources and requirements that, that the city has put on the use of public funds. Until recently, we have not been in a position to use tax increment dollars for bricks and mortar for, for any kind of housing unless it was publicly owned. Now, we can spend funds on what, what we refer to as, or what state statute refers to as workforce housing. And we have a couple of projects underway, under construction right now, where we're subsidizing that housing so that it can remain workforce housing. I can give you numbers in terms of, you know, what we've spent in the last, I don't know, five or 10 years since 2020, maybe, on different types of housing. If you are in attendance tomorrow, or Wednesday at committee meetings, we'll be presenting our 25 budget, our FY25 midyear budget report. And there'll be a fairly extensive section that, that will address just exactly that and also the whole issue of remittance and what the impact of remittances are. And I will tell you that, I mean, Missoula is fortunate to have a, a tax increment program that's as healthy as ours is. And we've been able to, to fund somewhere in the neighborhood of 18 and a half million dollars in remittances over the last five years. That's not sustainable. It's, every year, because of the fact that all the taxing jurisdictions get a piece of that, we only get 30% roughly. And it's our number that drives that the size of the remittance. We, we can't keep doing that unless you want to deplete the urban renewal districts. So, I mean, you know, since 2020, we've, our boards approved about 12 and a half million dollars of infrastructure projects that support 421U or retained income restricted housing units. The boards approved 1.7 million in funding for property acquisition and public infrastructure that provided supportive services and/or emergency sheltering. We have traditionally supported organizations like mental health providers in terms of them being able to build adequate facilities. We have supported housing that was designed and made available only to low income residents who have disabilities. So I mean, there, there's been, I would venture a guess that if you compared what Missoula has spent on housing and specifically income qualified housing against other communities, we would be in the top tier on that without, you know, boring you with a lot of numbers and statistics. But, I mean, to, to, to keep going back to the remittance, I think we need to do that and we need to go into it with eyes wide open because the day will come when it's not there. So it's not going to be there for affordable housing, it's not going to be there for market rate housing, it's not going to be there to address blight, it's not going to be there to, to address improving our, our, our way of life in our community. And so those are, those are decisions that need to be made very thoughtfully. And I'm, you know, I'm thrilled to be part of an organization that has the capacity to do this. I mean, we have been able to maintain level of service in this community for the last several years because of the health of the tax increment funding. So I'm happy to try to answer any questions and get off my soapbox.
You got to the numbers, so that answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. I think we're still, are you, are you wrapped up with your questions there?
I'm done.
Okay, excellent. I'll move on to the next group there. I'll just also provide a quick synopsis because, you know, we have talked just agnostine on this floor, but we will, I mean, I think it's important to say over and over again that the economic development tool afforded to us through state statute that is the redevelopment agency is, it's, it's for two purposes. It's economic development and it is infrastructure investment. And we are able to fund affordable housing projects because of the efforts that are made utilizing the tool that is tax increment financing when we invest in economic development opportunities. And we're able to do an infrastructure investment when we're able to invest in economic development and that increment, increment gets created. So it's important to just, I think, continue to clarify that. In particular, Councilor Carlino has, has statement, has appeared to be an either or statement, and that concerns me. Like, we can either fund affordable housing or we can either fund luxury housing. And that is not how that works. The economic development aspect is intended by state statute to actually generate taxes. And so that's what we do with that tax increment tool. The other thing that I'll just keep reminding folks about is that schools and because tomorrow is the last day to turn in your ballot, schools are not funded the same, but they have a lot of the same challenging restrictions that does local government. Schools are not funded. If we are to do an MRA remittance and hand a million dollars back to Missoula County Public Schools, they do not get to keep that money. In fact, they will see a reduction in their state funding and who will see the benefit is the state of Montana. So I do think it's important that we make sure that we just keep that reality on the table in terms of how that works. All right, thank you. Councilor Becerra?
That was going to be my question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm glad that you mentioned that because I think it's important to remember that schools do not directly receive that share of their remittance. I guess for, for any of the sponsors, you know, we keep going in circles and that's because there's no plan attached to the numbers. And I just want to make sure that I understand, while you're not suggesting cutting things, one of the sources of revenue to fund the Johnson Street Shelter to continue to be open is potentially a remittance. But there's been no conversation with the MRA or the taxing jurisdictions on doing a remittance. And there's no, there was no conversation on what amount would be a remittance for. Is that correct?
Councilor Jordan, did you have a conversation with Missoula Redevelopment Agency?
Oh, I, I did not, no. Because, and the reason why is because what Daniel and I are trying to do is, is try and think in a different space and show that when we have priorities, we fund them and that we want to make sure that everybody has a voice at the table. And we knew this wasn't going to pass. We frankly knew it wasn't going to pass, but we wanted to bring it forward because we have been asked by the unhoused and we've been asked by neighbors and we've been asked by frontline service providers to come up with an, an alternative. And that's what we're doing. We're doing our job as representatives and we're trying pretty hard to show that where there's a will, there's a way. And we're trying pretty hard to show that we have some concerns about our budget and how, and how we measure success. And that's kind of the essence of this referral in my, in my instance. I don't want to speak for Daniel, though, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Becerra, do you have a follow up question?
No, not a question.
A comment. Excuse me, I'll say it later.
Okay, thank you very much. And I have a, a live, I have a, I have a cough drop if you need it over here. Do I see another question from you, Councilor?
You do, thank you. Yeah, I find it surprising that, that thinking about neighbors, because I represent the area around Johnson Street Shelter, so, and, and so does Kristen. So I find it surprising that you have heard a lot, it sounds like you're hearing a lot of different things from neighbors than I am because the neighbors don't want it open. But that's not really the point of, of why we're closing it. So I mean, I guess my question is to the mayor, actually. You know, and do we have, have you researched, would you speak to, I guess? I don't know how I want to say this exactly. Because Daniel's suggested that we just open another shelter. I know that that is not something that, that is, you know, I know this decision was very hard for you. As I said, we meet regularly, we talk about things. I know that, that you, you, you are at a heavy as the head that wears the crown and has to make some of these decisions. So, I mean, I know that you've looked into the idea of another shelter. This is not something that you went, oh, we're closing it, we're, oh, well, I mean, that, that's, none of us feel that way about it. All of us are worried about this. As I've said on the record many times, I'm worried about the housing sprint, I hope it works, but I can't find a way to fund it. And this plan is not a plan, it's an idea. So tell me about what you have done as the mayor of our city to talk to service providers, to look into, to the idea of opening another shelter, whether that is even a good idea as far as what people think in the national homeless space? I mean, would you speak to that? Because there's conversations like you just didn't even, it didn't even cross your mind. And I know that's not true.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, Councilor Cheryl. And I appreciate the support of this council for my funding request to, to fund Johnson Street in FY25 with the remaining ARPA dollars we had and the ability to keep that open while we finished our strategy to address homelessness. Where we are right now is over the course of the last, I mean, it started the day I became mayor because the Johnson Street has always been a temporary location, not be, not just because of the fiscal cliff that was the reality of the funding, but also because of the inevitability of that property with the direction that redevelopment is, is directed for that site. But indeed, the city was at the table with private housing developers and project developers working with homeless, shelter providers, provider, I should say. There's really a primary shelter, homeless shelter provider here that's for the general public and that's the Pavarello Center. We know the YWCA provides family shelter at their Meadowlark. And there is no other homeless shelter provider in that space. We were looking at a site to see if it could be, if it could be built. And ultimately, the city is not in a position to continue funding that shelter when it is open because we are in the same position operationally that we are today. We don't have money within the general fund to fund an equivalent sized shelter at $2 million or more by the time it got built. So the service provider that we're under contract with now, the homeless, service provider, the Pavarello Center, examined their capacity and ability to, to do fundraising for that and chose to decommit from that partly because they have work to do for the project that we just, that you just approved funding for tonight, for CDBG funding to fund the rehab of the old city hotel, city, city center motel adjacent to Yolks Grocery Store. That will be transitional housing for homeless veterans. That's been a project a couple of years in the making. It's been quite a feat to put all the funding together and the Pavarello Center has accomplished that. And so rightly so, they had to turn their attention towards that and funding their existing facility on Broadway. So it's understandable that they also could not put the resources into fundraising for the operations of a new shelter. And, and because of that, there was not an opportunity for us to take a look at what kind of resources do we have at the table? What, what we would be able to look at as the city is, how could we finance or how could we be part of a financing stack that could have resulted in the opening of a new shelter as, as, as part of another project? That's, that's what we were looking into is, is there, is there a possibility to bring a proposal like that forward to you as city council? But ultimately, we, we just are not able to bring that amount of resource to the table. And it's the, and really it comes back down to the sizable price tag of $2 million or more annually to operate an emergency shelter. The, the, the thing, we can, we can debate this and we should continue to talk about this as we get underway. On Our Way Home, which is a, a community led strategy to address homelessness, talks about right sizing the number of beds. It's not shelter beds, it doesn't say shelter beds. Shelter beds are part of that. But the conversation led from that leadership group, which is a, a wide cast of community members that participated in that process, are thinking about how it is that we are identifying the right kind of bed. So even temporary safe outdoor space, that would be the kind of bed, permanent housing, the, the, you know, emergency shelter space, all of that, and taking into consideration what is, where should the city and where should our community be putting its resources when it comes to addressing the root cause of homelessness? Because I agree with Councilor Carlino, we want to go upstream and really address the issues that are fundamentally causing homelessness, which is houseless, being without a house. And we know that there are a number of people that, of course, will struggle with finding permanent housing and keeping it. And so we're working through our housing sprint with the wind down of the Johnson Street to make sure we're connecting people, either reunification with family or friends, or connecting them with mental health rehab or treatment.
Thanks.
Madam Mayor?
All right. May I respond to a comment that Ms. Cheryl made?
Is it a, were you asking Councilor Jordan a question?
I was not.
Okay.
She just mentioned that I, that I think residents want the shelter and I'd like to clarify.
Sure, go right ahead, Councilor Jordan, you bet.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I, Amber, I, the constituents I've talked to don't necessarily want the shelter in their neighborhood, but they do want a place for people to go and they generally see the value. And particularly Franklin and the Fort neighbors have been really active in supporting the shelter. But the majority of my constituents I've talked to said, yeah, we don't like it in our neighborhood, but we know people need a place to go. And just really quickly too, low barrier shelters are essential in a continuum of care for providing homeless or houses for the unhoused. And so I think that you can just do a quick internet search and look that up. And it shows that a lot of the leading homeless advocacy groups are saying, it's not the answer, but it's part of the answer to have low barrier shelters. So I just wanted to add those comments, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I would also add to that, that low barrier shelters, although they vary, the term low barrier varies quite a bit in the type of activities that are still permitted on site. And it also, if you, taking a look at that research does indicate that it also is dependent on the type of capacity and services that your community has available to actually make a low barrier shelter successful and safe for not only guests, but also the neighborhood and residents around that. So there's definitely a place for emergency shelter and we want to always make sure that we have that in our community. And so I will just note that the Pavarello Center continues to do great work and will at their Broadway facility and now their second location with the veterans transitional housing there. Okay, Ms. Anderson, do you have additional questions?
Super quick, I just, when Ms. Buchanan was up at the microphone, I just wanted, I had a quick question for her if she wouldn't mind graciness with her presence again. And as she's walking up, I will ask my question. You said that over the last five years, we have taken $18 million in remittances from MRA and to help at various points balance the budgets that have, you know, funded a lot of the things that we're talking about here. If I'm doing my math correct, 30% of that $18 million roughly equates to about $5.4 million? And that's what, what the city would get? When we actually spend money out of the MRA to do a project, to acquire land, to, you know, all the various things you said, do we get to spend all of the doll, you know, is it dollar for dollar? Remittances, we lose 70%, but when we spend it on a project, do we get to use 100% of the funding?
That's correct.
So basically, you know, we have short sighted ourselves $12.6 million, not because intentionally, but just why there is a, a cost to taking those remittances? Because we are less Because we are less that money in the MRA to actually do projects that go to workforce housing, childcare. You know, all the various things that you mentioned earlier.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for the record that I am still doing math. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. And Counselor Sherrill, your hand is up, but I think it's just from a leftover residual. Okay. So that does appear to wrap up our council questions. We've had a robust Q and A, and I appreciate that as well. Thank you. So what we'll do is now hear the main motion, and then we'll allow for public comment on this item. So Counselor Sherrill.
Okay, thanks. And maybe as when we get to voting, maybe we'll have some clarification on how we vote yes or no of what we're just because this gets confusing because this comes. So I I recommend that we do not adopt a resolution. I think that's how I should read this because it's recommend do not pass. I recommend we do not adopt a resolution to continue allowing full capacity at Johnson Street Shelter, direct the mayor to continue funding of shelter space for fiscal year 2026. And or, I guess, fund any remainder of the housing sprints funding goal. It's a little clunky.
All right.
When you're saying it's a negative, but
The negative, exactly. Ms. Trimble, will you clarify for the voting practice here? The
Yeah, we we did change that a while back. We should. We should just start saying something like did not pass in committee is just a factual statement. So we're we're we vote on these now the same way we did in committee. So if you're a yes vote is in favor of the motion as it was presented in committee. A no vote is against it as it was presented in committee. We're not flopping them anymore.
All right. So for clarification, the motion is that it would be a vote for the resolution. The note here just says recommend do not pass, which is basically indicating on the agenda what the action or the decision was from the committee. Did I did I say that correctly?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
My lights are flickering back here. But yes, that is correct. It's just that the do not recommend just is a notation that this was heard in committee, and it did not pass in committee.
Okay.
Okay, so I would say I would just say I I recommend that we adopt it, and then we would say yes or no.
That is the motion that's on the floor. Okay. Motion. Yep, yep. The motion on the floor is that is an adoption of the resolution. It's a the committee recommends not passing it. Do you agree? Or just, oh, God, no, I'm doing it in reverse again. I just tried. I'm being so. Never mind. Right. Okay, so everybody understand clearly what the motion is on the floor. I'm gonna look around here for a second. It's okay if you don't want to ask a clarifying question because I know it's confusing. Okay.
Well, I'll I'll repeat it after if there are any public comments.
Great. All right. So motions on the floor. We'll go ahead and turn this over to public comment. Anybody here in the room wishing to make public comment on this agenda item this evening? Come on up to the microphone. Please say your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Sage Bennett. B E N N E T T. A lot of what, sorry, I'm a little bit emotional tonight. A lot of what I've heard as a complaint from you folks is or from the council is that this is too rough of a draft of a plan of what to do. I guess I'd like to argue that for the fiscal year of 2025, I have seen you also do a rough draft of a plan with this. During this year, I've seen you do two parts of an idea of a plan and talk about it as though, quote, we are building the plane while we're flying it. I saw you do the urban camping working group. I watched all of these sessions. I watched you lie about what is done during these sweeps by the river. You said that people's properties were never destroyed by city employees, and yet literally that day, I had recorded a video of the city doing that. It broke my trust in the things that you say. I saw you ignore the massive amounts of people that came out in protest of ordinance 12.60 till almost 3:00 AM. Service providers, unhoused individuals, acclaimed authors, people that work in the criminal justice system from all sides of this problem, asking you to not enforce this ordinance. And during this housing sprint, I have yet again see you seen you throwing service providers and the unhoused under the bus, relying on service providers to pick up the mess that you have made too heavily in a way that they can't that they don't have the funding and the resources to be able to do. And yet, when this all falls through the cracks, it's going to be on their shoulders because your hands are tied financially. And you keep saying that. And we all know that budgets can be moved around. I understand that you feel like there is some critical parts of this budget. I guess all I am saying is that we are failing the people who have the least amount of resources in our community who are endangered the most in our community. I have seen. I am very grateful for the Johnson Street Shelter and very grateful for the Pavarello, and I have heard stories of pregnant women only being given the very minimum of meals, if you can even count it as that. And where will they go? And what will they eat after the Johnson Street Shelter is closed?
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment this evening?
Timothy Garrison, G A R R I S O N. I'd just like to publicly thank the council for the last year's efforts to fund the shelter and to find that money. And I understand that that was a stretch to do that, and we appreciate that. Also, reiterate that we do have the temporary safe outdoor space and that I encourage the city wherever possible to continue to support the county in that effort as well. And going forward, that there are other alternatives, other alternatives do exist. And I've said it before that there is a certain amount of responsibility on the federal government, on the state government to provide this. City cannot provide this. It is a shelter that we support a much bigger area than just Missoula City. We support the county. We support the state. We support this region. So appreciate all the efforts we've done in the past and understand that it's not something that we can sustain in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Garrison. Other public comment tonight on this agenda item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Do we have any public comment online? It looks like we do. Chloe Carlson. Go right ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Chloe Carlson, C A R O S R N. I'd like to echo the things that Sage said, totally valid and true. And I'd like to answer a question that Mr. Nugent had about the state statute that is about to be passed HB six four two, that's a $500 a day fine. Every day you are out of compliance with a city camping ordinance, so it's absolutely applicable to this situation. And then I'd like to get to my comment here. During the recent committee meeting regarding the Johnson Street proposal, Councilman Nugent grossly misrepresented the words of public commentators dismissing their concerns is disgusting and falsely accusing them of calling for failure of the housing sprint. What is truly disgusting is that the elected official would so blatantly distort the voices of the very people he serves just to score political points. The comments in question did not hope for failure. They pointed out that the housing sprint is already failing. The rental market is in crisis, skyrocketing prices and dwindling availability. Yet the city council continues to push forward with half baked solutions that lack thorough research, transparency, and accountability. Band aid fixes will not address systemic issues plaguing our housing system. First, these rest policies are actively harming the unhoused population who are being shuffled through ineffective programs without long term stability. If Councilman Nugent had actually listened, he would have heard legitimate frustrations of residents who are tired of seeing the same cycle. Grand promises, rush.
Chloe, we're gonna go ahead and point and order you because there's no direct comments in regards to council. I believe you were on when I read the decorum earlier, so please relate to a particular action or your comments towards me. Thank you.
Yeah, this is all true stuff. So instead of attacking constituents, perhaps he should focus on so many people have lost face in the city's ability to deliver real housing solutions. We need data driven policies, not political posturing. When the council start taking responsibility for consequences of these poorly planned initiatives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments, and we'll now hear from Chris Kay, please. Chris, you're welcome to unmute yourself. Chris, everything is a go from our side. Are you able to unmute yourself there? Okay. All right, I'm sorry you're not able to unmute yourself and provide public comment. Oops, sorry about that. All right. Okay. Chris, there is a phone number on the agenda. If you are able to call in a couple of weeks ago, and we had this issue when you were trying to make public comment, the license for that phone number was expired, but that license has been renewed. And so that phone number is active and that phone number is for the public if you wish to call in. That's audio only. Let me find the phone number here. Call in audio only, 406 384 6960. 406 384 6960. You can see there is a conference ID. You'll have to enter if you have happen to have the agenda up. You can see that. Phone conference ID. 456 096808 pound. All right. We're gonna go ahead and have to move on. Sorry about that. Okay. That does wrap up our public comment on this agenda item. And so we'll go ahead and bring it back to council comments. We have had an extensive discussion tonight. I am going to limit it to one comment per council member, and I'm going to ask that there are not retorts or back and forth. So make a matter. Let's hear your if 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 I can't imagine there's more questions. If there are questions for sponsors, then we can hear that. But really, this is an opportunity for council comment. So Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you. I will just keep it to one comment, but I have a couple of points. That's all right.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you to Sage Bennett for bringing up the idea again that it's not unusual to send an idea to staff to derive a list of viable outcomes for council to consider, just like we did with the Public Works Directive to find options for the sidewalk assessments. Shelter beds are essential for the continuum of care and getting people to permanent housing, including the J Street Shelter will ensure we lose that piece of the continuum. Best practices related to that same continuum of care state that ordinances such as 1260 cause more harm than good. We do not have a solid plan to ensure folks can stay in housing once or if placed through the housing sprint. I also, you know, I have said this before, when there's a will, we find a way to fund. It's not in the city's interests essentially to have enough shelter beds to be a part of the continuum of care. We are not using our data found within the Missoula Coordinated Entry System or the fuse list, as Emily Armstrong mentioned in a previous presentation, to prioritize placements of unhoused individuals. We are also not allowing those who have been survival camping to be a part of the housing sprint. And finally, as Jimmy Carter, not Gandhi, I was mistaken, once said, the measure of a society is found in how they treat their weakest and most helpless citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan. Any other council comments before we take a vote on this agenda item? Counselor Carlino.
Thank you. I think we've had quite the discussion, and I appreciate everybody's questions and comments. I think, you know, overall, if we if we decided that we wanted to find a path forward to funding the shelter or another shelter, we could. Now, whenever, you know, we want to do things that, you know, make policies on things that involve homelessness, we find a way to do it. And just, you know, the conversation that making it seem like we have no agency over this issue, I think is just false. You know, I think it's the government's job to be able to provide for people, especially the most vulnerable community. And I think the whole community is going to suffer from, you know, making this decision not to do this. So I think if we want to find a way to work together and make it happen, we certainly have the power to do so. You know, we're the largest branch for for the city. And if we wanted to, we could. And I understand that it's complicated, and we have a lot of other funding priorities. But, you know, I suggest that this is this should be a one of the top funding priorities for this year. And I understand that there's disagreement on that. And I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you, Counselor Carlino. Counselor Nugent.
Thank you, Mayor Davis. I I also appreciate the conversation. I think that what's frustrating is whenever the conversation comes up, the implication is that we don't care and that we could do this if we want and all the money's there and oh, we could move this. And then when we ask specific questions, it kind of gets couched in a well, we could do this if we want to, or we could direct them, or we could do this. And and I think everything tonight illustrates that there are no specifics. It almost, dare I say, feels performative. I think it's important to note that we fund security at the Pavarello. We will continue to fund security. We fund part of the hot team at the Pavarello that goes out and does outreach, and we will continue to do so. We are doing things like the permit program for vehicle camping. There are a lot of things that this community is doing more than many others. And I know that people don't like to hear that. But it's frustrating to me because it feels like part of the criticism is just every time something doesn't go one way, it's you're not doing enough, or you don't care, or all these other things. And, you know, a lot of us up here, you know, have heard it, and we can certainly take it, but it certainly doesn't lead to a productive conversation or one that feels like we're trying to have it in a serious manner, you know. The criticism has come up that we've known for several years that this was coming, but the flip side of that is for several years, people could be bringing solutions that included how we're going to fund it or how we're going to pay for it. I've been part of conversations in the community on trying to find another shelter and trying to find partners that could pay for it. And you know, so many of these topics come up, and if it's not debated on the council floor, it somehow nobody cares. But then in the same breath, a lot of the people who are accused of not caring are the ones on council who actually do the work to fix some of the things and get things done and bring them back. And I think it's important for the public to keep that in mind. I also think that the continued efforts to say things that are incorrect about MRA funding or or you know, implying that we're spending money on police officers that we could somehow move is is in bad faith. So. You know, I asked a few months ago when this whole topic came up that if it came forward, it needed to have specific cost offsets because that's the reality we're in. And, you know, the idea that we should just send this back to the staff, well, the staff has made their recommendation. The staff works for the mayor. Mayor Davis has made her recommendation. I have talked with her many times. I support it, and I appreciate that it's not an easy place for people to be. It's not a place where any of us want to be, but we're doing the best we can with the limited resources we do have. And so again, I appreciate the conversation, but it's it is misleading to suggest that we could somehow be doing something different if you listen to this whole hearing tonight. So.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Nugent and Counselor Sherrill.
Yeah, thanks. I'll be brief because I think my questions kind of illustrate how I'll, I'll be brief because I think my questions kind of illustrate how I plan on voting. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, as I said on Wednesday, I think this is, this is an idea. It's not a plan. I, I don't think that based on the conversation tonight, that the sponsors are aware of what they would be cutting and what that would mean for, for the other, other work in the city where that, whether that's police or the HUD, support for the HUD programs, support for the veterans, whatever. So, you know, I also, I want to push back on the idea that just because we want to fund it, we can fund something, we can, we can find the money. I mean, I've been on council, this is my sixth year and every, we've had a lot of mayors during the time of, during what, what is kind of a, a short period. Every single mayor I've, you know, worked with on different projects and every single mayor has shut me down on different projects that I wanted to do. I mean, so there's a lot of stuff I would like to do, including, and I will say, including having another shelter if it were warranted. Like, you know, if we, if this housing sprint doesn't work, if we need another shelter, I would love to be able to do that, but it doesn't mean that we have the money to do it and that we have the money to do it in the right way. So, you know, or that we have a partner to do it. So there's a ton of things that I would like to do that we do not have money to do and we have not done in the six years I've been on council. And to be honest, if we had more money, I think all of us would probably feel like we were more effective council members. We just don't have enough money to do everything. I would agree with Mr Nugent that this council, you know, the, it, there's become a dynamic in this. I don't, I don't really understand why this was, was brought forward, knowing that we didn't have money for it and without a plan, you know, other than to talk about it and to sometimes make many of us look like we don't support any of these services and that we don't support any of the vulnerable people in our community. And, and it's just not, it's not true. I mean, we're doing it in a different way than, sometimes we're doing it in a different way for our community than the sponsors would like. And the bottom line is there's not, I mean, money, there's not money for it. And I haven't seen the mayor telling us there's not money for it, the, you know, the sponsors aren't finding money for it. You know, I, I am, I'm, you know, I'm worried about what is going to happen not having the Johnson Street Shelter. I am worried about that. I am, I've said that and I have been, I'm a supporter of the housing sprint, but I am also worried about it. So I, I have concerns. It doesn't, it doesn't make the money appear, but I have real concerns about what this means for, for that population and getting things done. I also want to say, just because we've had a lot of conversation tonight around the work that staff does and looking like maybe we could just get rid of those staff and, and that wasn't valuable work. And I want to say as a councilperson, for the city, that, that I appreciate and I want staff to know that I appreciate the work that they are doing in this space and the lives they have saved because of the work they're doing in this space and the people's, not just lives they've saved, but also lives that they've, they've changed. So know that you are seen in that and that I, I am not the only one on council that understands the amazing work that you are doing for our community and, and I want to thank you.
Thank you very much for that councillor Cheryl. Appreciate that. Councillor Anderson.
Thanks so much. I will also try to be brief. I appreciate the comments from Ms Cheryl and Mr Nugent. They echo my thoughts as well. And, you know, I've also been on council for a, a little while and I remember having a conversation with Mayor Engen when we were debating in the summer of 2020, the FY21 budget. And he said to me that this is the budget that has had the biggest, the most robust investment in social services of any municipal budget he had ever seen. And we've only expanded upon that. But we, as a municipality, were not designed to be a, you know, unhoused service provider. We have the power of convening, which I think is what a lot of the work that staff do, doing the Missoula Coordinated Entry System, along with all the things that Ms Cheryl had stated. Some of that is not the easiest to just put a, a, a metric to. I mean, yes, we want data, we want to be data-driven, but you know, what's the data that you would put to bringing together a meeting of service providers and a new way of one of them doing something differently because they found it was duplicative of another service provider? What, what's the metric on that? But it was still valuable and, and moved the needle forward to the folks who in our community are the most vulnerable. But I want to push back strongly on the, where there's a will, there's a way. Or if we just work together, we could make this happen. I think the questions that myself and some of the other fellow council members asked were to highlight the fact that that is not a true statement. I think all of us around here, you know, I know that I, you know, as soon as I got the email this afternoon, looked at it, looked at the spreadsheet, looked at the numbers, asked questions because I, I wanted to see what was being proposed so that I could come educated and prepared. So to just say that, you know, we knew it wasn't going to pass and we just wanted to have a discussion about it, really, I think, is really disingenuous because, you know, there are new ideas that are brought to this table that are, you know, change the way we look at things and, but there's a lot of work that goes into that behind the scenes, talking to staff, talking to council members, talking to stakeholders and, and really bringing a robust plan forward. And I think that this, what Ms Cheryl said, that it does feel like part of this was just to, you know, show that some people on this council may theoretically care more than others. And I just fundamentally categorically disagree with that. You know, I worked my tail off to get that levy passed to make sure that the mobile support team had a permanent line item budget because how important the impact of that was. I worked on the crisis services levy that wasn't passed because I thought it was important that we have line items for those. In the absence of the, the crisis service levy passing, we have been able to cobble together, you know, funding of the Johnson Street, expanding programs because we were able to have ARPA dollars and CARES Act dollars because our community wasn't as greatly impacted by the pandemic as other communities for a variety of reasons. And so we were able to reallocate those. And, you know, I remember sitting in the budget where we are adopting the 2024 budget and, you know, Mr Bickel making it clear that, you know, depending on how certain things worked out in the budget, that that may have been the last year for ARPA. But because things broke in our way, in our favor, we were able to continue ARPA dollars for the FY25 budget, which is how we got Johnson Street as far as we've been able to get it. You know, we all know the mayor's background and her commitment to making sure that those in our community who are most vulnerable have a home and it's been her life's work. And so it, I can only imagine how heartbreaking it had to have been to come to the decision to, you know, close the shelter. But it was a decision that was made nonetheless, supported by myself and several other council members, because we have been in those discussions all along to really understand the, the budget and the effects it has. And, you know, we don't have a magical slush fund with the MRA, that taking money out of that actually has long-term impacts and opportunity costs to actually do permanently affordable housing or low-income, you know, market rate housing and all of the various things that Ms Buchanan has at numerous times stated to us about the impacts of what they do and the, you know, opportunities we have in our community to utilize those funds. But when we take it out, it's a, a short-term fix of only 30% of those dollars with, you know, unforeseen long-term impacts of what we may be missing out on. And those are the tough decisions that we have to make here on council. And I am, you know, I asked for this position and the voters, you know, gave it to us and, and is not as simple as, well, yes, there's the money, there's a will, there's a way. And I think if a genuine plan had been brought forward that actually showed a way that there would have been willingness amongst my council members to have a concrete, productive conversation to actually think about reallocating that. But that's not what happened. And, you know, but, you know, you're going to hear a lot about the fact that there are some of us who don't care. And if we wanted to, we could. And myself, as Ms Cheryl said, there are so many things that I have wanted to, to fund over the course of my time that actually would have meaningful impact that there wasn't a will, there, it wasn't a lack of will, there was a lack of funding. And municipalities were not designed and funded, especially in this state with how we have our, you know, tax dollars and whatnot funding to be this much, have this much of a social service, you know, responsibility placed on us to fund. And I think that I applaud the work that we have done and the work our staff has done and Mr Bickel for, you know, at various times pulling what I feel is a rabbit out of the hat to do as much as we have been able to do. And, but unfortunately, there's times where there just isn't the funding and it's not for a lack of will. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Anderson and councillor Savage.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say that I do understand the, the impetus bringing a referral like this. I understand trying to pick apart a very complicated budget process. We are all mere mortals here. I have two journalism degrees. I do not have a degree in finance. And it is confusing sometimes and it is hard to sort of try and understand, especially as a new councillor, when you're like, well, what is the road district and what, why can't we use money from the parks district? And so, so I do appreciate that and, and the sort of, the intent of shining a light on that. So I appreciate the councillors for bringing this forward. I'm not supportive of it because I have, as I've said several times, up here, ever since I've been on council, I have been asking for, from the administration, not from this council, really from the administration, like a, like a comprehensive plan around houselessness in Missoula. I think that we've had lots of fits and starts. I think we've had lots of different things that we've tried, largely some of it because of the pandemic. But I appreciated that the mayor brought this to us. Council did not decide to do this. The mayor and her staff sat down, looked at the numbers, looked at what we've all been talking about for a really long time, which is that this was going to come to an end. We promised that neighborhood that we wouldn't keep the shelter there any longer. And so I feel like particularly when it comes to that neighborhood, we've asked a lot of that neighborhood. And, and, and I do think that it is time to put our efforts into things that are not sheltering. And I think that we have all read and been told and understand that sheltering is not the answer. I also would like to say that I feel like I've really appreciated how hard staff has worked to try and bring this housing sprint forward. And I have really come to trust our housing staff. And so if they believe that this is what we should be doing, then I am behind them. I don't think anyone wants people housed more than Emily Armstrong, frankly, you know? I mean, and so I do support the housing sprint and I think that, that we will see what happens. We don't know the answers. We don't have all of the answers, but we're trying and that's what's important to me in this. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Savage and councillor Farmer.
Thank you. I'll also be brief. I just wanted to say first to the sponsors, to Kristen and to Daniel for bringing this forward, thank you for having this conversation. It's not an easy one to have, but I appreciate the intent behind it. I'm also not in support of voting yes on this just yet. For a lot of the reasons, it's already been said. But one thing I wanted to say is just, I, I, I'm not voting against this because I don't value the Johnson Street Shelter and the service that it's provided. But I think that all along, we knew it was a temporary solution and it served our community really well for the time being. But there are now services that didn't, that weren't in place before when the Johnson Street Shelter first opened. One of those being the MST. The vehicle parking program, I think, is very successful and that was not in place prior to Johnson Street opening. And that was a recommendation that came out of the Houseless Working Group. And I think that that is a piece that we can continue to rely on. I think we also didn't have a resource guide and now we do. And I think it's also worth mentioning, you know, several years ago, when I was growing up in Missoula, camping was not allowed anywhere in the city limits. And this ordinance does allow people to camp from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. And I know it's not ideal, but there is, you know, there is places for people to go. So I think because we have all those resources now in place, I'm just not quite ready to vote to keep Johnson Street open, knowing we would actually be cutting positions. That's the reality is that we would have to cut other services and positions. And some of them would potentially be in programs that are supporting folks that are unhoused. So for all those reasons, I'm not ready to vote for it, but I do appreciate the conversation and all the questions tonight.
Okay. Councillor Farmer, thank you. And before I turn it over for a vote, I will also thank the council members tonight for a, a robust discussion. I think anytime there's an opportunity for us to have a thorough budget conversation to best understand the four corners at where we're at, it, it's, it's helpful. I'm hopeful that, that folks can continue to take those learnings. We are out, learning out loud leadership here. And, you know, we've said from the beginning, and, and I really appreciate what you just said councillor Savage, is that this is iterative, this work is iterative. And had it been solved, we would have followed that playbook. And, and so we're going to continue to learn from the work that we're doing and, and, and hopefully make good decisions going, going forward here. And so with that, I will turn it over to Ms Trimble for a roll call vote.
All right. So just a reminder, we did switch how we do these items. You are going to vote on the motion as it was presented by the sponsors. So, and as, so the motion we are voting on this evening is to adopt a resolution to continue allowing full capacity at Johnson Street Shelter, direct the mayor to continue funding of shelter space for fiscal year 2026 and fund any remainder of the housing sprints funding goal. A yes vote is to adopt that resolution and no vote is to not adopt that resolution. Any questions before we begin? Right. Beginning with Carlinho.
Yes.
Farmer. Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
No.
Nugent.
No.
Savage.
No.
Cheryl.
No.
Basika.
No.
Anderson.
No.
Becerra.
No.
And Campbell.
No.
All right, that is two in favor and nine opposed. That motion fails.
All right. Thanks, everyone. That wraps up our regular business and we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. So if there is any public on non-agenda items, but are the, in the confines of this council, we'd certainly appreciate to hear from you now. Councillor Nugent, might you help again with the podium? Just one brief second and we'll make sure that microphone can get down to you. Been very patient waiting for tonight. Please say your name for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rasm, Rasmus Booth. I'm a fifth grade student at Missoula International School and I've been working on a project looking at climate change. Today I'm going to give a short speech on climate change and capitalize on some points I think are important. It's important when one thinks about climate change to take into account the concepts of responsibility and change. Although there are many of us who may not have taken many actions against climate change, it's important that we remember there are people out there fighting against it. It's also important that the people who are taking action receive this message. You are not alone. It's also important that the people who are taking action receive this message. You are not alone. Humans have contributed to more than ninety-five percent of climate change and a positive attempt can go a long way. We think about the concept of change because it's important for people to think about not only this generation, but also those of the future. These questions may not affect this generation or sorry, we we think what if climate change were so bad that humans couldn't live outside? What negative effect does humans have uh does climate change have on other species? These questions may not affect this generation, but in fifty years, a hundred? If humans can't survive outside because of climate change, the impact on our species would be terrible and could possibly lead to a collapse in society. This is why I think the city of Missoula should continue to make sure that they take our our climate and sustainability goals into account when making future decisions about our community. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the short speech.
Well, you're very welcome and thank you very much for coming in and delivering that speech. And I'm not sure if you were in earlier when I had the chance to mention that the city has some interesting initiatives online. If you've had a chance to to research some of those. And one of those is that we're going to continue to partner with the county of Missoula and the city of Bozeman, and we're going to continue to work with Northwest Energy to get a green power plant built. So we're waiting to figure out the final framework on that together. But ideally, we'll have fifty megawatts of clean energy that will be available for our residents to purchase. And that will either be in the form of solar or wind likely, and so more to come on that. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Really appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Counselor Nugent, for your assistance. Anything to help? Stand, you can stand up, stretch your legs. All right. Uh, anybody else in the audience tonight wishing to make public comment on items that are not on the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody, but I do see some folks with their hands raised online. So uh Catherine Kennedy, please, if you can unmute on your side.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hooray. All right, it seems to work by phone. This is actually Chris Kennedy. I tried to use my desktop computer. Oh, K E N and E D Y eleven Ward one. Um, I've tried my desktop computer and my laptop. Neither work. I was grateful to get the time to call in, but this failed again. After entering the code provided, I heard, sorry, I can't find a meeting ID with that number. The Johnson Street Shelter topic usually carries a great deal of comment. This was absent today, not surprising. In a thriving democracy, the voices of the people aren't a nuisance, they are the engine of progress. Yet here in Missoula, our mayor and city council has made a troubling habit of tuning those voices out. Public comment, once a cornerstone of our local governance, has been eroded by moving it to the end of meetings. These meetings have grown shorter and not because decisions are easier, but because dissent and inconvenient truths have been pushed aside. Several council members expressed gratitude for the robust dialogue today. There was a dialogue among yourselves. Few members of the public were present for comment. Let's be clear, this is not about order or efficiency, it's about power. When elected officials stop listening, they stop being accountable. And when those in power can pass controversial measures without hearing from the people most affected, they can and will act without consequence. The mayor is not a C E O, the city council that doesn't listen is one that's forgotten its job. They are public servants. They have jobs to govern with the community, not despite it. Several argue that input from residents slows things down, the meetings run too long, but many comments are repetitive or emotional. What can be expected? These are people fighting for their homes, their schools, their neighborhoods, even their shelters and their lives. Democracy is not always tidy. It was never meant to be. Listening takes time, so does earning trust. I'm not asking for special treatment. I'm asking for basic respect with the ability to be heard. It's time to prioritize the convenience of the public and to bring the public back into public service. Thank you very much and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris, and we'll look into the concerns that you identified with the phone number when you had uh tried to call in. Thanks for pointing that out for us. Glad you got in uh to the meeting tonight. And next public commenter, Chloe Carlson.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, yeah, Chloe Carlson, C A R L S O N. Um, and I'd like to ask if any of you could name one single place someone is allowed to camp in the city? Um, what do you expect it to look like when we have a hundred more people living on the street or more than we do right now that are going to be subject to the five hundred dollar a day penalty every day that they are out of compliance with the city camping ordinance? And what sort of sustainability are you going to try and guarantee with this housing sprint? Because I don't really see any. Um, and that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Chloe. All righty. Uh, any other members of the public wishing to make comment? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Any new hands? Okay, I think that wraps up our public comment on items not on the agenda. Um, we'll move on now to communications from the mayor. Um, I had another point that I wanted to raise earlier, and that is to just mention for council members that we had committed to doing routine updates on the housing sprint. So that is scheduled. I don't believe it's this Wednesday, but it's the following. So the housing staff have scheduled their next update for you and um you've been receiving my periodic updates too, so we're committed to keeping those updates coming your way. Um, and I know we've been here for a long time um tonight, but I did just want to say um the Missoula appears to have, you know, melted out of the snow and there is just so many activities happening, which is um really exciting. This this weekend alone, it was, you know, First Friday and then it was the Brew Fest downtown. It was the um, the uh, we had the farmer's market that um uh that went live this Saturday. Um, I had an opportunity to attend the Five Valleys Land Trust um event, which was um quite remarkable to see how many people showed up to continue to preserve open space. And they're an ongoing partner for us at the city of Missoula and we can use those open space dollars to leverage some larger land purchases for um for the for the public good. Um, and then lastly, I would like to just acknowledge um members of the Mong community that are here in Missoula. They res- resettled here um after the Vietnam War and it's the fiftieth year of American Mong Day. These are folks from Laos that are um allies to the United States and they um they partnered with the United States in the CIA's secret war um in Laos. Um, and because of that, their lives were threatened and they were um, they were eligible to be legally resettled here and did so um in the late seventies and early eighties. There are um, you know, thousands of members of the Mong community that have come over to the United States and several hundreds still um live in and around these areas. Uh, there was about a hundred folks in attendance at the uh at an event at the old library on um on Sunday and we started with the National Anthem. And it just really reminded me of um the rich uh and diverse culture that we have here in the United States and here in Missoula. So I feel very fortunate for those community members that have um they've put down roots. Um, speaking of the farmer's market, of course, you see a number of the members of the Mong community there as farmers, but there are so many more in terms of business enterprising folks that have um created different businesses, become schoolteachers, professionals. So I just wanted to give a shout out to those folks. And then lastly, on Sunday afternoon, it was celebration of the the fortieth year of the String Orchestra of the Rockies. And um that is an exceptional group that plays here in Missoula um at the University of Montana in the Recital Hall. If you have a chance to go see them next year, um please do. There were members called the Next Gen, which is um folks that have been playing with this string orchestra for three and four decades. Um, there were folks that were studying music and graduating from the University of Montana that are ready to pick up the strings and carry us into the next several decades. It's really beautiful and it just is incredible how much art and culture we have here in our beautiful community. So I just wanted to share a few of those words tonight. And I will pass it off to Counselor Savage. Counsel comments.
I'll make it quick. Um, as many of you know, um I work at Missoula County Public Schools and I'm making these comments as Counselor Savage, not as employee Savage of Missoula County Public Schools. But tomorrow is um a school board election and a day to vote on um s- school levies. We have three levies, two operational levies, one at the elementary and the high school district and um one safety levy at the high school district. Um, you can still drop your ballots off tomorrow. Um, uh ballot drop offs are from um seven A. M. to eight P. M. tomorrow. Um, and there are ten and you can find those at missoulavotes dot com. Um, but I do encourage you to vote for these school levies. Um, the way that the state of Montana funds schools is awkward at best. Um, they give you a number and say, this is how much it costs to run your schools and we're going to give you eighty percent of that. And you every year can go to your citizenry for the other twenty percent. Some communities don't do that. Um, and that's what we've seen with Kalispell and Kalispell is asking for a massive levy because they haven't leveled up in a really long time. So um these incremental um asks are um not above what the budget is. It's just to get to the budget. So um in support of all of the children in Missoula, I hope that you will vote yes on those. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Nugent.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Davis. Um, a couple of things I just want to address something that came up twice in public comments and came up on horseshoe. Um, the five hundred dollar per day fine does not apply to our ordinance because we have specific um fines outlined. I confirmed that with the city attorney um again this evening. So I just, for anybody listening, um feel free to look into that more, but that is the guidance we are getting and I have no reason not to believe it. So let's focus on actual facts, not misinformation. Other than that, I just would echo Ms. Savage and say, uh, please do, don't forget, please do get out and vote. It's obviously too late to mail your ballots in, but there's all kinds of drop boxes, including one at the election center and one uh for the ward for residents by between the fairgrounds and the Y M. C. A. in that little parking lot uh drop-in space. Um, and you can go to the elections website and see all the other spots as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Nugent. Counselor Cheryl.
I'll pass.
Okay. And Counselor Anderson?
Ms. Savage, that is the best explanation of school funding that I have heard in a very succinct manner. So appreciate you uh providing that and um, you know, Montana has one of the best public education systems, I think, in the entire country. And um, you know, and I'm biased because I'm a proud product of it. But um I think it, you know, it's incredibly important to support schools because, you know, it's the next generation of the people who are going to be sitting around this horseshoe and the next generation of police and fire officers and all the people that make our community work and the doctors who are going to discover cures for diseases we don't even know yet. And um it's supporting them is an a- a hard ask. I filled out my ballot. I I filled in those bubbles and I did the calculation of how much my property taxes were going to go up, but I knew that it was an investment in my future and my community's future and having a well-educated citizenry at this time is now all more important than ever. So um I will echo those sentiments as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, just going to jump on because we've been talking about budget shortfalls and the city is a four million dollar budget. Well, the school system has an eight million dollar budget.
Um, sure.
Shortfall. Sorry. Uh, and I think the calculation I saw for all of those combined levies was like two dollars and seventy-five cents a month for a house that's worth four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it's less than a cup of coffee a month to support safety, arts and music programs and general operations. So um, yeah, encourage everyone to support our school systems.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Counselor Jordan.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments tonight. So I wanted to just reiterate that, um, you know, I brought the resolution forward tonight with Mr. Carlino with genuine intent. Uh, my job as a city councilor is to represent, like the ceasefire resolution, which a lot of constituents wanted brought forward because it helped them feel like they were doing something to show support. Representation is my job. While bringing something like that forward may be performative for some of my colleagues, it is not for me. I am representing people every time I bring forward a resolution, every time I make a statement and every time I push back on the narrative. Because not everyone agrees with you or with me, but they all deserve to be heard. Um, I also genuinely appreciate hearing Mr. Nugent say that he appreciates the work of the hot team. Um, because I think that we may be having some conversations about that in the future. Their work is critical and um serves a really important niche. Um, and I do believe it's important to have conversations on the council floor. We did know this wouldn't pass because we don't have the votes, not because it's not a good idea. People wanted us to do the resolution we brought forward and we tried. We tried to offer creative solutions and use approaches from the past, such as directing staff to find myriad solutions for our consideration. It doesn't mean it wasn't worthwhile. I think we sometimes forget the fullest of our responsibilities as representatives and I'd like to see more conversations on the council floor. It ensures a well-educated citizenry. I also wanted to um summarize uh email that we got from Jill Bonney. It was forwarded from a blog post from Pabarello and I do want to apologize in advance to Mr. Townsend if this doesn't actually capture everything, but I did ask Chat G P T to summarize it and keep the relative relevant points because it's kind of a long blog post. But Frank Townsend is a um an employee at the at the Johnson Street Shelter and and he writes. Um, Frank Townsend reflects on his time working at Missoula, Missoula's Johnson Street Shelter, which transitioned from a seasonal to a year-round emergency shelter in twenty twenty-three. His early experience during a client's medical crisis revealed the shelter's deep sense of community, where staff and guests alike stepped up in a moment of raw humanity. J Street, as he describes it, was more than a place to sleep. It offered dignity, consistency, and authentic relationships to people often denied those things. Through small and large efforts, from helping someone to stay sober for five days to hosting legal aid and veterinary services, the shelters become a vital hub of support and hope. Now, at the shelter set to close in September, Townsend voices deep concern for the hundred and seventy people who would be displaced, warning that many may be forced into unsafe public spaces or even jail, not for wrongdoing, but for simply existing. He stresses that the closure not only impacts guests, but also the devoted staff facing layoffs. The message is clear. This crisis is preventable and Missoula has both the compassion and the capacity to choose better. J Street wasn't flawless, but it worked because people showed up for each other. Townsend calls on the community to act with urgency and heart, reminding them that the blueprint blueprint for a better system already exists. And I just want to find out, finish up with a um nod to um Public Service Recognition Week. Um, again, I love Chat G P T because it does um show the voice of the collective of um English-speaking people in the Western world, which is where we are. And I asked it what the job of a public servant in the United States is. And it says, a public servant in the United States plays a vital role in supporting the function of government and serving the public good. Whether working at the federal, state, local, or tribal level, their responsibilities include implementing laws, delivering essential services, and ensuring fairness, accountability, and transparency. Public servants uphold the values of democracy by working to meet the needs of the community, protect public resources, and ensure equal access to all to servants, excuse me, and ensure equal access to services for all. Their work helps maintain the system that allows society to function effectively and equitably.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Jordan and Counselor Basika.
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to be back in person. Hope I can come here more often. Um, I uh wanted to remind folks that uh on the school board election, um it's I um almost missed this one, so you're supposed to vote three of the four, not just one. So wanted to remind folks of that. And then regarding um Public Service Work Recognition Week, um I do, I recognize that public service work is really is often thankless. And I just wanted to say that uh I really truly appreciate the dedication of all the city staff and the contributions that they all make to our city. Every interaction I've had with city staff um throughout my tenure on council has been very insightful and I'm very impressed by all their kindness and professionalism. I've really enjoyed um reading the storytelling effort, the uh Why I Serve, which highlights the commitment and passion behind their work. And I know that we as council sometimes task departments with very daunting tasks. Uh, yet um I have seen that they approach their responsibilities with dedication and positivity. At least um from what I've seen, there might be some frustrations that happen behind the scenes. Um, but which is totally understandable, but I sincerely appreciate their hard work and their commitment to our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Basika and Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too appreciate um our public servants and their service to communities. I too appreciate our public servants and their service to community. As a public servant myself for nearly thirty-two years, I have a deep appreciation for the line of work and the service that everyone within the city provides. So and county and state as well, so, yeah, true to them.
Thank you for that, Council Campbell, and for your many years of public service. Council Becerra.
Thank you, I too was a public servant for, or working for the city for ten years. And I think that gave me a pretty good insight into how much work goes into everything that the city does. And I just, I just want to say that, you know, to every employee in the city and the county, each one of you fills a really important role in making our community as as great as it is. So thank you. I also wanted to say that, you know, it it is, I believe, all of our roles as representatives to do our due diligence, both when we bring a referral forward, to put something before this body that can be voted on with enough information. And when that doesn't happen, it is my role as a representative to ask all the the questions that I need in order to make an informed decision. So I I hope that we can have conversations about this topic. This issue will not be going away, so I I think for sure we'll be talking about this. But I hope that our conversations can be better informed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Council Becerra and folks online. Anybody online wishing to make comment this evening? Council Carlino or Council Farmer?
Oh, pass. Thank you.
Okay, all right, you bet. Council Carlino, it looks like you are not unmuting, so you're good to go?
Oh, also passing. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you bet. All right, folks, that does wrap up our general comments from council members. Thanks, everybody, for attending this evening. Appreciate members of the public being present and staff members that are here. I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you. Good night.